Good evening. Good? Okay, thank you John. Okay, good evening. Um this is the regular meeting on Tuesday, April eighteenth, two zero twenty three. We have a tobacco policy in place. There is no smoking within one hundred feet of any school building. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. District Clerk, can you please take roll call?
Trustee Sherry.
Present.
Trustee Bishop.
Present.
Trustee Story.
Here.
Trustee Wallace.
Here.
Trustee Ramondo.
Here.
Trustee Hemingway Lynch.
Here.
Trustee Taylor.
Here.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, second trustee story. Questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Um we should be back around six o'clock. Thank you.
Good evening, I'd like to make a motion to exit executive session, return to public session. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, second trustee Raimondo. Questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. I'd like to welcome Lynn Settleman.
Good evening, welcome to Antioora Middle and High School. This is a very busy and exciting time of the year at the middle and the high school. It's really hard to believe that we actually just put out third quarter report cards today. They're available in the student and parent portal. And again, I just can't believe that we're already in the fourth quarter. I actually have quite a few things to share with you. But after taking a look at the board agenda, I kind of think I'm gonna hold off on a lot of those until May. In May, you know, I'd like to talk about some of the things that we're doing, some of the initiatives that we're doing at the high school, some of the activities, and some follow-up items that I know the board was interested in. But out of respect for your time and everyone's time, I'm gonna keep this to one very positive, magical presentation. So I'd like to promote our school musical, which is the teen version of Chicago. And I want to give you a preview of the talent that you're gonna see when you come and see the show. I hope everyone comes to see the show. And to introduce the show, I'd like to bring up the musical director, Mrs. Constant.
Hi, good evening. Our production of Chicago Teen Edition comes to you thanks to the amazing collaboration of the entire Antioora School Committee, my partners, Mrs. Carroll and Ms. McCarthy. And I enjoy the enthusiastic support of our upperclassmen, administration, and the Board of Education. A musical such as Chicago Teen Edition has many moving parts. It takes a community to pull it all together and present a production. Luckily, we have the best community around. Antioora's maintenance department, parents, staff, volunteers, and our talented cast and crew all came together to make this show a reality. Post-pandemic has been hard on the arts and our students. The theater is a safe place, a home, a nurturing experience that grows over time. It's a place where there's a seat at the table for everyone. The magic and beauty of theater is not just the cast. It's the musical director, musicians, lights, the choreographer, and more that make it happen. It's also you, the audience. It's truly a team effort. It's amazing what can be accomplished when we all work together. For me, theater is family, and boy, am I happy that this family is mine. Please join us Friday and Saturday at 7:00 and Sunday at 1:00. And I'd like to present to you All That Jazz.
And all that jazz.
Well, that was fantastic.
So if you think that sounded amazing, you should hear it in the auditorium. The sound is just absolutely incredible. I just wanted to see if anyone had any questions for the musical directors?
No, just a big thank you. I mean, yeah, you guys are always fantastic, and we look forward to it. And I'll be there Friday night. And we're all really excited to see, especially Kristi.
Wait till you see the set. I'd give a special shout out to Mr. Schubert, I forgot to thank him.
Thanks.
Thank you guys.
Any, any specific questions for me? Because I really didn't prepare to speak too much today.
No, but you know we have a lot of questions for you in May, so we'll look forward to having you back. And I'm not sure I can thank you for setting us up after that for what's going to be not quite as jazzy.
If I just have all the questions in advance, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are doing something that, that folks may not have seen before. And it is, when you join the Board of Education, you learn a lot of words that you may not have known before. And one of them is NISBA, the other is NICE Ed. And there are a lot of rules around how we conduct our meetings, and how we are allowed to speak to one another, and how we are allowed to speak in the public eye. And we need to have a really open discussion about reconfiguration. We have not been able to do that really, because we are not allowed to talk to each other as a group unless we are in public. So this is our way of trying to have that conversation. We've asked Dr. Bill Christensen to join us. Dr. Christensen is a, is our board consultant. He has a very storied and amazing career. And he agreed to work with us this year to help us get to this point, but also to help because we were a fairly new board, and we needed some support in all coming together to get some really important work done for the district. So Dr. Christensen is joining us tonight so that we can have this conversation in public. He is going to facilitate the conversation and give us a hand in making sure that we can get it done appropriately. And he's joining us from Binghamton, which is quite a, quite a schlep. So thank you for coming, Dr. Christensen.
Well, thank you. Okay, I think you can hear me. Did it sound right? Okay. I will try not to hit that again. Hold it up? Alright, that'd be easier for me anyway. Me and podiums don't always get along, so, perfect. Alright, well, thank you for inviting me down. And I think I went to text, I was texting my wife about Chicago is one of our favorite Broadway plays, so may see me in attendance as well. And that's quite a voice. That's all, that's all I can say right there, having seen Chicago a bunch of times. Very, very talented group of kids, so something to be very, very proud of. So again, thank you for inviting me down. And really, my role tonight is, is really as a facilitator for you to have an open dialogue in public. It's very important regardless of the topic. I do a lot of work with a lot of different Board of Educations. And it's, it's critical that people were able to watch you work in public. And so as I stress to you over and over and over again, we'll kind of move through the information you have already seen. It's been presented in different buckets to you, from ad hoc committees to different things. It's important, as I, as I said to you, and I'll say it to everyone that's sitting here watching us, my, me myself don't have really any recommendations for you. My role is really to facilitate, make sure the dialogue is going back and forth. And most importantly, when we finish, it's successful when you have had either all of your questions answered, or you maybe have more questions, but basically that you are, as board members, are comfortable, or at least at a position where you can move forward yourself. And it's either directing the administration to come up with more answers for things, or possibly leads to a potential vote. So again, I commend you for doing this, working with a lot of different boards. And it is, it is difficult, I realize, to do this. I have been part of building a lot of new schools in my career. I've been unfortunately, part of closing a lot of them too, especially after 2008. I was a superintendent in Arizona where we were growing really, really fast. And then we shrunk really, really quick. And we had to close a lot of the brand-new schools we just built, which was horrific. At the same time, New York State is struggling across New York State with enrollment. I think everyone knows that. You are not alone in this, in this journey. I've lost track of the number of districts I've either talked to or I've worked with on this very topic. But it's important, and I commend you for actually taking it on before it's so far down the road that you don't have really any kids in school. So it's very, very important. So I'm gonna share with you, enough of me talking, just kind of go through what, if I can make this work, maybe? Yeah, I'm being technology sometimes. We'll let the experts handle it. Maybe not. Too far? I can walk, well, I can't walk too far. I can tell you too, if you want. It did work. We tried this, I swear. Good? Okay. Alright, and I'll just tell you, that's fine. So this slide, and I know it can be a little bit hard to read, but basically it breaks this down into really what we're gonna accomplish here, purpose and role. So the first part is, you know, we're gonna overview the three scenarios that you've talked about. I know they've been publicly talked about, some of the things that you're considering. They've been discussed, obviously, not just with your ad hoc committees, but administratively have been talked. I know what out in the community. Review, review some of the previous data that's been presented to you. I know it comes in chunks. And one of the challenges that Board of Educations have is that information comes in little, small dribs and drabs, generates questions, you get some answers, which generates more questions. So the idea tonight is to review some of that information, identify some of the answers to some questions that have already been generated. We'll see that document at the end. One of the last things we'll do is kind of go through that. And then most importantly, which I already stressed on, is ensuring that all board members have necessary information in preparation for a potential vote that would be coming up. And it's important for everyone to hear, and I think you know that already, they're not voting on anything this evening. So some norms of it, more for the Board of Education, because it's really a kind of a one-way conversation between you and I. Some norms between that is basically, any questions you have, go ahead and ask them. We'll get them out on the table, as far as anything that comes up, or information that you're looking for. If I know it's in here, I'll point to you and say, we're gonna get to that. Let's put it that way. If it's not in there, then basically we'll just take some good notes, and we'll generate that information. We'll come back to that. Okay? Does that make kind of sense on your end? Alright. Alright, so your first scenario, I'm just gonna overview these. If I'm incorrect in any way, please let me know. Your first scenario is around using Phoenisha and Woodstock Elementary and potentially closing Bennett. That's one of your options that you've looked at. Go ahead. The second one was using Bennett while closing Phoenisha and Woodstock. That's a, closing the two elementary schools and bring, basically bringing everyone to Bennett. Then your third one, which is really a fourth, there's really two scenarios in here, but closing one, either the Phoenisha or the Woodstock, and then using Bennett. So there would be, in that case, two potential elementary schools that would be in a K5 configuration. So some prior work to this, and we can certainly go through the report if you want, but there was the ad hoc committee report, which I know you've made available, and I know was presented to you. I don't know if there's any questions more related to that. I had an opportunity to read two different ones. I know Cindy was part of that. Is there any questions else from the board as far as that information that was, that you got, anything like that? Okay. So the next few slides, go ahead. This is some enrollment data that you may be familiar with. Cornell University is one of the universities that studies enrollment, studies K-12 education to exhaustion. A lot of universities do, but Cornell is one of the ones that I use quite a bit. Here's some of their slides that you've seen. You may or may not have seen these, by the way, in Ulster County, the moving in and moving out data from 2019, 2020. That's about as current a data as you typically get. It takes, from a, from a state ed perspective, or even from a research perspective, it usually takes a good 12 months to collect all of that. For everyone here, the information that comes from public schools gets turned in still on what's called the infamous Beds Day, which is October 1, which is a lot of the data that New York State uses and reports out in school report cards. You may have seen school report cards that are published on the state website. The school report card is just, just that. It's a bunch of demographic information, but it's also a bunch of information that comes back. Like, it'll show you test scores, it'll show you sometimes student-teacher ratios. Those are kind of skewed, because they take all staff and divide by students. But there's a lot of other data in there as well. And they do one for every school, and then they roll it up to the district. Your student achievement results are often published in those school report cards. So that's one source of data that I'm sure that they are using for this. So then they roll it up into countywide. So you're looking at countywide data. And you can see some ups and downs. What you can see is that second side of there is where the, the moving outs in 2019, 2020. This is consistent really across your area. And go ahead. You'll see some other, you'll see some other counties as well here. So student enrollment, this is, be a little bit more specific, I know I'm having a hard time reading it too. These are some of the surrounding counties that are around you. So to the left of that is Sullivan County. You can see the steady decrease there. Ulster, you're all the way to the right. And you can see that steady decline. So currently, in the last reported data, was projected out, about 19,000 students. The high of it was 28,000 students. If you go to Duchess County, you're seeing some even drops there. That's the second one that's there, which is 45,000 to 34,000. So basically, what this, what this graph is painting is the steady decline you're seeing across all of the counties in your area. This rapid decline does create a lot of challenges, obviously, for schools. Nothing that we haven't seen before. Some of the comments that are made at the bottom. Columbia and Green County have seen the most dramatic decline in percentage. Overall region will lose 25% of its students between 2000 and 2013, 2000, all the way to 2030, so that 30-year span of time. As much as I've seen, you know, as much as that sounds very dramatic, and it is, you have other regions as you continue up your corridor. So up 30 towards, not just Sullivan County, you start getting into some of the outlying areas like Delaware, Shenango, those counties, some of them have seen 30 and 40% reductions in school districts. I'm working with a district that had 2,600 students nine years ago. They are down, they will go under 1,000 this year. So you're seeing some dramatic decreases in those areas. Not really necessarily relevant to you, not to say it's a predictive of what happens in your, your area. But the reality is, is New York State as a whole, and I don't know how much of that you're following, is seeing a decline in K-12 education as far as students. Go ahead. Is there any questions the board has so far with this? This is just kind of raw data that I've seen before. It kind of paints the same thing. This is just a visual graph of saying exactly what we just said. So I don't know if we really need to go through that. But you're basically at a 26, basically, the study area as a whole is 26%. Looking at Ulster County, around 33%. Okay, that's really what this paints. So this is more specific to you, which is what we're really here to talk about and, and what's important. So this shows your enrollment. And you can see, your graph doesn't look very different than a lot of the districts I've seen. You basically have that, that height back in 1995, 96. If you went back, you probably would see even more steady, if you went back into the early 90s. Very, very typical. Where I was a superintendent in New York State, it would look exactly the same. You, I literally laid our graph. I've been out of, out of the superintendency for the last five years, but from 2010 to 2019, I was in the district in Delaware County. And it looked exactly the same, literally exactly the same, almost the same student count, to be honest with you. And so the decreases you're gonna see have kind of flattened out. And then they do, this graph does project out with some confidence out to 25, 26. The reason they can project that out is live births that come into the area. They basically, that's how the reported data that goes to New York State as far as births, then they project them five years later to go to school, to go to kindergarten. So you're sitting right around the 1,100 mark, which is about half of where you were, what looks like on this graph, a peak, a little bit less than half. And it looks like about 2000, 2001, somewhere around there. So go ahead. So that's kind of, any, any questions on that? That's just generated data that I know we've talked about before, that I've shared with you. You've shared it. It's come from many different sources. I know you had a report done a few years ago, pretty much lines up with that same thing. And I would say to you, just from my point of view, it's pretty consistent with what you see across, across your region. I don't think anyone is really in a hyper-growth situation. There are some communities that have seen some growth from what we call the New York City migration post-COVID into areas. That may or may not continue, it just depends. We've also, some of those districts have seen it start to go the other direction too, as, as people start to move back into New York City. So those are, and some of those are some unique communities as far as they had a lot of housing. They had some new, new builds that were going on. I don't know if a lot of that really affects you, nothing at least that I'm, I'm seeing. So, go ahead. Yep.
Thanks for this. This is very helpful. The, in the communities that you've seen increases, what time, type of percentages are you seeing?
The biggest communities I've seen, it would be around the Albany area with some of the, what we call the P-Tech circle up there, which is some of your Microns. You've heard about the Microns. Amphenol has opened up some new facilities up that way. A lot of R&amp;D for the military, government-type contracts. So counties like, areas such as Colony, the Colony School District has seen some growth. Not as much as some of the others in that area. So like that, the Syracuse region is now prepping for the large Micron. I'm not sure that will pan out, depends on who you talk to. There will be a lot of jobs. Whether or not that really creates a lot of housing, we'll see. Usually, there's, there's something, there's something that new that comes in.
But numerically?
Numerically, between, so between 5 and 10% would be, would be hypergrowth. I mean,
Hypergrowth.
Yeah, I haven't seen hypergrowth since I left Arizona. That was hypergrowth. You were, we were growing between 6 and 7% a month. But we're also closing 30 homes a week. That's not something that, and keep in mind, even at the height of that, we were looking at 1.5 children at the elementary level per home. So you could, you could do the math on that, that it was, you know, a classroom and a half every week. I don't foresee that happening in New York State anytime soon. Where you're seeing that happen across the country now is Tennessee, Texas, Colorado. Still in Arizona is now back to that growth model. There's a couple of other states, I'm sure, in there. But Florida, Florida, of course, being one. But I don't see that in New York. Some of the districts that I have talked to, and just colleagues, former colleagues that I've talked to, that are seeing growth, they're seeing growth around 3 to 4% a year, and they're considering that pretty good. This next slide kind of talks about, go on back one if you could, please, I'm sorry. Yep. This talks a little bit about enrollment. And so what, what, where this data comes from is on the left-hand side would be current enrollment. So it would show your kindergarten, first, second, third. And this is projecting out to 2024. Because from the beginning, one of the conversations was, is that anything decided, let's say in the next month, two months, whatever the case may be, is not going to happen on September 1 of 2023. And I would 100% agree with you. Like I said, I'll leave my opinions out of things, but I would, I would advise not to try to move any type of changes that fast. One of the challenges you get into is obviously, you know, you're working through transportation, you're working through families, you're working through a lot of different types of emotional things, but also there's some logistical planning. So when a decision, usually what I recommend to Boards of Education is that once a decision is getting ready to be made, and the decision has been made, then, then, as a former superintendent, the more time the merrier you can give, in this case Superintendent McLaren's staff, to come back to you several different times to lay out a plan of true implementation. And that gets vetted along the way. So, you know, be, as I've said to you, but for everyone else that's listening or watching, it's not a one-time decision and it's over. And you make, you as the Board of Education have been entrusted with voters to make the initial decision to move forward with this. From that point in time, it becomes very much an administrative function to make it happen. And whatever, whatever steps very much an administrative function to make it happen. And whatever, whatever steps that Superintendent McLaren and staff, and, and how she decides to do that, of course, collaborating with the board of education, is critical for the checks and balances along the way. And that's your transparency model to this, is, you know, people really get hung up on, well, how much money are we going to save if we do this? Or what'll happen here, or what'll happen there? And what I'd say to that is, those are all important factors in your decision-making, but there are a lot of unknowns right now. You have a lot of retirements potentially. There's always a fear of job loss, that's always the case. But you have a lot of retirements, you have enrollment changes that will occur. So this gives you a kind of a snapshot, is if, if today was that day, what that, basically that prediction looks out to September one of twenty twenty four. So that's what you're looking at, just to be clear. So being, showing a little bit of growth in the kindergarten area, that's where the number seventy five comes from. Your current number is sixty seven. That would show that there's basically four hundred and twenty six students, if you're following me, in September one of twenty twenty four, there'd be four hundred and twenty six K five students. All right, so that's, that's the projected number. Is it perfect? Does the crystal ball tell us exactly? Will it be that? You know, if you, on September one, twenty twenty four, you look down and there's four hundred and thirty, I would say we've done a pretty good job. If it's four hundred and five, I would still tell you we did a pretty good job. If it's two hundred, I'd say we didn't do a very good job. And if it's nine hundred, obviously, we did a lousy job. But that's not the case. You know, playing in there with, with some potential growth and things like that, four twenty six is a good target number. So currently, you're sitting at five hundred and eighteen. That's K six, though. So if you back out the sixty six students, you could do the math there, and you'll see that's your current K five enrollment. Okay, so the, the reason I'm beating this up a little bit is that this is an important data point as you look at your scenarios again, because we're going to come back to them, to kind of show you what this looks like, and potentially to help with your decision-making. So is there any questions on that? Do you understand where that's coming from? You see why there's two seventy fives in a row? Because the first seventy five is next year's kindergarten. That's why they're there in first grade, and the second seventy five is the second, projecting it again. All right? And that number, go ahead.
I just wanted to add, at this point, we only have about sixty two set for kindergarten for next year, but just allowing for any kind of potential growth, throwing a seventy five up there is just more conservative.
Yeah. And that's, that's a good point. And, and, and any time, and, and I would agree with Superintendent McLaren with that, any time you're projecting out, always err on the side of larger than smaller. Because the difference between, even if that number grew to eighty five, it changes your overall number to four thirty six, not to, not enough to substantially change the way you're, you're going about things. You know, where, where the changes come in, what you tend to see is pretty steady numbers through your middle grades, second, third, fourth. You see you're pretty consistent. And if we were to look at K twelve numbers all the way through, you would see that, you have a large class right now in fourth grade at ninety four. That's large for you. And then you see the eighty two, then you see the sixty five coming behind it. So as the former administrator in me liked that right off the bat, is the challenge. So you have X number of sections of, of fourth grade right now, and next year you have thirty, almost thirty less kids, basically twenty nine less kids, if I'm doing that math right, less kids the following year. So, so from a staffing standpoint, that requires some changes. But focusing on the final column, that's kind of where those numbers are being generated from. And, and again, just making sure we understand that, because I'm back to, so, go ahead. So another source of data, and again, we'll come back to numbers here in a minute, is I did have an opportunity to review your five-year building plan. And so for everyone else that's watching, the five-year building plan is required by NICE ed or New York State Board, New York State Education Department. That is done typically by your architect. I believe in your district, it's Clark Patterson. They, or CPL, you may know them as, they conduct your, what's called your five-year building condition survey. That's your five-year building plan. So when you're looking to do a capital project in New York State, your initial projects or high priority items must be identified by an architect or an engineer. And so in this case, CPL, or Clark Patterson, has done that, had a chance to review it, your most latest one, and I'll, I'll show you some of the numbers from there. And what that is, is kind of the bare minimum of things. So, so to give you an idea, it could be something as simple as you have some aging windows, or your roof is twenty plus or thirty plus years old, so it's ending, you know, it's getting to near the end of life. It's the architect's job to go ahead and identify those items and report all of that to New York State with potential costs that are associated with it. So once they do that, that's the nice part. But none of us in this room that have children get all that excited about the five-year building plan, I'm going to be honest. It's things like lights, doors, it's not great. It's not learning environments. Unfortunately, New York State, Department of Ed finds it very important, your learning environments, but it is not the essential to remodel areas into what I would say more contemporary or more progressive thoughts. So we'll talk about those in a minute, but it did identify your, go ahead. It did identify your high priority items. So jumping right into Bennett, your architect did identify about six million dollars worth of what I would call typical maintenance slash capital items. Some of these included like some roofwork, some doors. I did have an opportunity to walk through all of your buildings. You have some flooring, different things like that that would be identified on that as well. So now moving into, and you'll see this consistent with each of the schools, and just for the board of education, just so you understand the way I put this together, is we're going to talk through each scenario, and I'm going to basically talk a little bit about some building costs, potential enrollment is in this slide, and then what has been predicted that we would have to do, you would have to do as a district in order to prepare for any one of these scenarios. So does that make sense? So in other words, if you were to choose to close two schools, what would you have to do at Bennett in order to make that happen? All right, and that's an important piece to this, because part of the decision-making matrix that I've talked to you about is understanding the initial impacts right now without doing anything at all. You have to assume in a decision-making initially, that you're not going to do anything other than maybe what's on the building condition survey. You'd like to do lots of things, believe me, or district I work with wants to do lots of things. Most districts can get to about fifty million pretty quick. There's this thing called taxes, and there's this thing called, you know, reality that we can't do. So the way I structured this was around what you can do without doing a lot of that, and other just typical maintenance items, and then what the potential might be and cost might be if you were to move past that. And so, in other words, if you were to renovate some space. So this will make more sense if I'm confusing you as we go through. So scenario one closes Bennett, so there's not much to talk about. You wouldn't be doing much there at that point in time. So the building is closed, so there's no real impact as far as that. In the second scenario, you're closing the two elementary schools, and in that scenario, so basically in theory, creating a central campus. And if I mess one of these scenarios up, please correct me, but I, I think I've, I've basically gone through my head enough times, I think I have it. The second one, though, is closing the two elementary schools, Woodstock and Phoenisha. So in order to do that, you would, is projected, you would need to add an additional ten classrooms at Bennett, which would then create an enrollment of four hundred and twenty six students. The building theoretically probably could hold that. You don't have any fire code issues or anything like that, but based on your current programming, based on your current needs of students, you would have to do some upgrades. You would definitely be in a situation like gym, I think was, the gym area was one of the things that Superintendent McLaren and I talked about. Certainly food service, things like that, you would be, you'd be in that type of catch-up. So you would have a significant amount of work there that would have to do to pull that off initially. Not to say you couldn't do it, not to say it might not be the direction you move in, but just keep that in mind. Scenario three would be closing one school or the other. So the top one is if, if Woodstock was to close, you would still have to add five rooms. Basically, you'd be adding five rooms at the other school. Did I say that correctly? No. You'd be adding, um, I think I haven't switched, don't I? Yeah. Yeah. So if Woodstock closed, you would be adding five rooms at, at Phoenisha. That's correct. So those are switched. I apologize. I tell you, I, I've talked myself into circles on these scenarios. So if Woodstock was to close, there are only fourteen classrooms at Phoenisha, and so you would need five more, basically, to make it happen. The enrollment would be two hundred and thirteen. So the two hundred and thirteen number you're going to see over and over again is half of that four twenty six. Does everyone follow me there on the board of ed side? So the four twenty six number is being split in half. So you would have a K five school, either, in this case, Woodstock, I'm sorry, Phoenisha is that top example, and you would have a K five school at Bennett. Correct? Everyone got that? Okay. So that's a scenario. The second one, if Phoenisha was to close, you would have no need for an additional room at Woodstock, because there are twenty classrooms, correct me, right? There are twenty classrooms at Woodstock, so they could hold the two hundred and thirteen students. All right, so just kind of review that again. If Woodstock was to close, you'd have to add five rooms at Phoenisha. If Phoenisha was to close, you would not have to add any rooms at Woodstock. They would be able to go in there. And in return, you would have two hundred and thirteen students also in Bennett, which is actually less students than you currently have right now. Because again, we're going on the premise that the sixth grade decision has, has, you have made that, and that's moving forward. So I've not factored that into any of the, any of the scenarios. Go ahead. So Woodstock, talking about Woodstock now, the BCS approximately, about four million dollars was identified there. There's certainly additional work there that could be done, and I think will be part of your capital plan. Again, I'm, I'm error on the side of what your architects have, have identified. Keeping in mind, and you're going to hear this number a couple of different times, especially when we get to Phoenisha, any type of renovation that goes on right now in K twelve world is somewhere between three hundred to four hundred dollars a square foot. And I know that sounds extremely high to everybody in here, and especially if you're doing some work at your homes, but in, in K twelve, in, in any type of public job in New York State, you have what's called prevailing wages. And so the prevailing wage for the workers that are on site is significantly higher than in the private world that we do a lot of work in. So K twelve costs for construction are very high. And so typically, we budget anywhere from three hundred to four hundred dollars a square foot is how we look at that for renovation. Also, your buildings, like every building I work in across New York State, except a couple of brand-new ones I've had the pleasure to work with, has asbestos, has PCBs, has different things like that. In some cases, even lead paint. Your buildings are safe, it's all encapsulated, but when you go to remodel it, so you go to remodel it, you must abate that and take that out. New York State Department of Ed requires that to happen. You also must come up to all of your current codes as far as HVAC, which is your ventilation systems and things like that. So that's where that number three hundred to four hundred dollars a square foot comes from.
But to be clear, you're going to have to spend that four million regardless of whether you close Phoenisha or, or, or keep it even, no matter what, you'd have to spend that, right?
Yeah, Dave, agree. That's a great point. And so I'm sorry if I wasn't clear on that. So as you start to move forward with capital plans as a district, you start to talk about some of the work you're going to do, as you submit to New York State, the, the Department of Ed is going to be looking at your building condition survey to see if you're addressing the items that are on there. Some of those they'll insist, and I'll just use an easy example. This is relatively new space, so it's easy to pick on. So if you had doors coming in here that were older doors, that didn't have, let's say, crash hardware on them, or what we call fire escape, and you wanted to put a new floor in here, New York State would say, no, 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 you can put your new floor in, and we'll help you with that, but you're going to fix that, you're going to fix the other items that are also on your BCS. So chances are that over the course of the next five to seven years, as you do capital work, you'll be addressing that four million dollars. Yes. Now, ironically, typically, or I'm going to say ironically, but the four million will just be a starting point. You may decide to do seven million, or eight million, or ten million on classroom upgrades or, or spaces like that, but that's ultimately your decision. But if you were to go in there and say, we would like to put new flooring in the first grade wing, or the first and second grade classrooms, they would go back to that four million dollar list, and they'd say, okay, we're all about that. I think that's a great idea. However, we've noticed that your ventilation system doesn't meet the new standard, your roof snow loads don't meet the new current snow loads, your windows efficiencies aren't high enough, and you still have old lighting. So they'll add, they'll add to your list, is my point to that. Could be new tile and the ceiling tiles. Sir, go ahead. Yep.
Yeah, thank you for this. And just a clarification on the, the Clark Patterson Lee estimate. Have, have we already clicked a few things off that list? Because this was from twenty twenty one, correct?
Some of them have been.
Some of it has been, already been addressed, as I, I would assume.
Go ahead, Victoria.
We have not done a large amount of work in the outbuildings without a long-term plan, but you can see some of the things that are on the, on the budget for next, for next year, but it's, it's relatively small and across the district.
Thank you.
And so there's two ways to do, go ahead, do you have something else there? I'm sorry. There's, there's two ways to do capital work. One is going to voters for a referendum and passing a project, and then that allows you to, what's basically, bond it or borrow money and then pay it back over a fifteen-year period of time. The other way that is very popular for districts, Ulster, Orange County, some of the others, Westchester County, down this way that I work with, is what they call pay-as-you-go. And that's what Superintendent McLaren is referring to, is that in your budget, you have a certain amount of money to go towards capital upgrades that might be going on. So the, same, same thing would apply. You would look at that, and you would say, state, when you go to state ed, and understand the role of, of state ed is your building permit. You do not go to your local officials for building permits in K twelve. Out of courtesy, you often share the building plans with them and what you're going to do for fire safety and things like that. That's just common sense. But state ed is your ultimate, is our ultimate decision-maker as far as building permits, if that makes sense. Sometimes if you have some local codes, though, you will comply with them as well, but typically, it is state ed. So that four million is kind of a baseline number, to answer that. So in these scenarios, there's no initial changes needed. Basically, with Woodstock, basically in scenario one, you were closing, scenario one was closing, what was scenario one? Just lost it again. Jeez. It was closing, closing Bennett. Okay, so in closing Bennett, I'm checking on you, sorry. And by closing Bennett, basically, Woodstock would be open with basically two hundred and thirteen students. At that point in time, Bennett would get, basically, those four hundred and twenty six are just being split a different way. Does that make sense? So Bennett doesn't exist in that first scenario. In the second scenario, that is when Wood, Woodstock is closing, because both of your outlying buildings are closing. And scenario three is now, if it was to close, obviously, there is nothing that needs to happen to Woodstock. And if it stayed, if it was open, it would again have two hundred and thirteen students, and based on the number of classrooms you have, it would hold those two hundred and thirteen students. Go ahead.
Sorry.
Nope.
But in fact, am I correct that the most students that we've had at Woodstock are almost double that at four oh four in two thousand and four? So you actually have a capacity to, to increase if need be, if there was a wave, for instance, of new students who would come to Woodstock, you would have capacity to absorb them, would you not?
At least, at least that amount. I mean, if you were to talk to state ed, the building capacity is probably closer to six hundred, but you and I all know that that's not realistic in this modern, modern age. What's happened is your building sizes from state ed were decided in nineteen ninety four. The way your teachers teach, the way school was conducted in nineteen ninety four is slightly different than twenty twenty three, and so, size-wise. But to answer that directly, you're absolutely correct. The school has had as many as four hundred in the past. Right? Now, if you were to grow, let's say you did have that huge influx into that area, and you were to grow by a hundred students or something to that effect, then you would have to evaluate that then. But keeping in mind, what a hundred students would have to do to two hundred and thirteen, that's quite a percentage of increase, and that wouldn't happen overnight. That would be happening in a very slow progression. Similar to you saw your decline, you would see that same incline. And so that would give you time to adjust for that.
So you've never seen an incline
Not in New York State.
In New York State that is of that level.
Another, another state I've seen it, but I've never seen it.
But not here.
No. No, not like that. What I have seen is subdivisions come in. I have seen subdivisions come in that might raise, you know, forty or fifty students, but again, that's across several grade levels, not one or two grade levels. And again, if, and correct me if I'm incorrect here, but I'm pretty sure of this, when I looked at your policies, you have some class size limits already in place. So you have some safe gaps for any concerns parents might have about, you know, suddenly you're going to have the, the nightmare of thirty-five kids in a classroom. That is not going to happen. And, and you have, you have stopgaps in there for that. So, and again, I commend you for that. A lot of districts do not. Growth just occurs, and then when you can hire, you hire. So goes with that. So that's, that's the Woodstock scenario. Just quickly run through it again. Scenario one, basically, there's nothing that really changes there. They would have two hundred and thirteen students. Scenario two is closed, doesn't matter. Scenario three, if you were to choose to close Woodstock, obviously, nothing at that point in time. If you remain open with it, there's no initial changes that are really needed. It can hold the two hundred and thirteen students. And Superintendent McLaren, that you, you gave me the number, the current enrollment is like one, it doesn't be exact. It was, you told me it was.
I believe it's one forty seven or one forty nine.
One forty something, yeah. So you're about one forty. So you'd be adding about sixty, seventy kids, maybe eighty kids to that, to that scenario. Okay, so that's, go ahead. So that's the Woodstock. So looking at Phoenisha now, Phoenisha has about five million dollars worth of initial maintenance items that is on the list. Phoenisha, I did spend quite a bit of time in Phoenisha as well, and, and I'll, I'll give you a little bit more from the capital perspective there, but let's go through the scenarios. In scenario one, you would need to add five classrooms. So if you take a classroom, at the minimum size of a classroom that you're going to pull off in, in the elementary level is about a thousand square feet. So about a thousand square feet, and let's be, let's, let's say you can do it at three hundred dollars a square foot, you can go ahead and do the math on that. That would be the minimum level you would do. Now, one of the things to keep in mind is that when you go to add five classrooms, you're going to be addressing a lot of other issues in that building. Okay? I didn't talk about this with Woodstock, because in, neither one of those scenarios were you going to add any square footage to the building. So when you talk about Phoenisha, or you talk about Bennett, these are the ones that, if you were to bring everyone to Bennett, you'd have to add classrooms. So on the Phoenisha side, if you were to add five classrooms, you'd be at at least three hundred to four hundred dollars a square foot. However, you would be at least, you would also be identifying that five million dollars. Also in that building, you would have the modular, we call it, I know you call it the modular. It's kind of attached, but it's been there quite some time. I would anticipate, just from a code perspective, that New York State would want that addressed, as far as either you'd have to remove it, bring it down, do something with it. And again, this all goes back to the fact of renovation. And the reason this hasn't come to light before, and, and I believe Superintendent McLaren made this point earlier, you haven't done a lot of work in the outlying buildings, because this decision has kind of been talked about for a while. You've been mulling around enrollment and looking at, at the school situation. I also can't commend you enough for not doing work in a building and then closing it. That is a financial nightmare for you. I, I don't, we've never That is a financial nightmare for you. I don't, we've never talked about that scenario, but if you do work, and you are not one of a high aid districts, and you start to, but New York State does pay for a certain percentage of the upgrades you do to your schools. You're about a 35, 40 percent aid, even lower than that, okay? I'm sorry, I work with a lot of different ones. Work with some districts that are 90, and I can tell you, that's nice. Although it's not nice when you close the building afterwards. New York State wants all their money back when you close it. They take all their money back, so that means the bonds goes on everyone else. So what that means is that if you borrow $10 million, and you are a 30 percent aid district, you will get back 30 percent of that $10 million over a 15-year period of time. If you close that building, you're going to give back that 30 percent. You're going to pay it, basically, from a taxpayer perspective. So the fact of the decision to not do a lot of work that was aided, now you realize that you don't make decisions based on building aid, like a lot of districts do, it is still a factor, because 30 percent of $10 million is quite a number, divided over, sorry, divided over that period of time. Divided over that period of time, that is quite a bit of money. So again, I commend you for that. But scenario one, back to the point here, you'd be adding five classrooms. Scenario two, you wouldn't have any, as far as the building would be closed, it doesn't make any difference. And scenario three, if you were to close, there is no, obviously, again, if you were to open it, you're right back to the same scenario where you'd be adding five classrooms, or basically 213 kids would be going there. Yes?
Just for the math, what's the average square foot of a classroom?
A thousand's going to be about the minimum at the elementary level you're going to be able to do. Yeah, about a thousand. Now, with that, as you add five classrooms, your architect, for code purposes, may have to address your bathroom situation. You do have, in that building, just again, walking through, you have to make sure you're ADA compliant with a certain number of student bathrooms. You'd have to make sure, obviously, the demolition of the building, that the attached modular, as you call it, hallway spaces, things like that, as far as Phoenisha.
Just because I just looked at that five-year plan, the modular is included in the 4.5 million for Phoenisha.
Correct, correct. It is, and when I looked at that, it is, it is included in there. And part of it is, they're not, they're looking at renovating to bring it up, up to speed, because on a five-year building plan, you can't show a demolition. So that number that you're seeing there is to bring it up to code for it. The question would be is whether or not New York State would look at that as, is that acceptable or not, based on that building? Because you have, that's on a separate fire alarm system, it is on a separate, it is tied in, but it's on a separate air conditioning system, it's on a separate. So there's a lot of things that I really can't tell you the rules for, because they are a moving target even with state ed on that. So I don't know what would happen.
Thank you.
You may just lose that square footage and have to build something completely different.
Okay, so did that, in your assessment, just to understand, if you, when you say roughly, we need to add five classrooms, does that mean with the addition, where the music room is, where the modular is now, does that include that? Or you're suggesting we would
No, it's actually leaving the
Seven potentially.
Correctly, yeah, it could potentially be seven. And I want to stress with that scenario with Phoenisha, and again, the day job gives me a little bit of background on this. And just for everyone else, I work with school construction on a regular basis. One of the things I want to point out is you have floor tile, you have a lot of other ventilation systems, things like that, that are all going to have to be upgraded, in order for you to even do the five classrooms. So you're not going to take $400, multiply it by five, or I'm sorry, multiply it by 1,000 by five, and get to the number. You're going to be doing a lot of egress work there, you're going to be doing quite a bit of work. I would imagine an entire new ventilation system is going to go in there.
And have you spitballed it in terms of, like, I just did quick math here, and I came up with 2.5 million for seven classrooms?
For seven classrooms.
Just the classrooms, not including the, what you said, the egress, the potential demolition of the modulators, the HVAC? Have you spitballed?
So, yeah, so if you go back to, just to give you a rough estimate, so you're putting seven rooms in, but you're touching the other 14 ventilation systems, you're touching their doors, they're touching their tile in the classrooms, you're touching all of that. You're going to be, well, you're going to be in the neighborhood of at least 14 to probably 17 million, it could even be higher than that, at that point. Now, are you going to have to do it all at once? I don't want to make it sound like you'd have to do it all, no. But it's going to be a slow progression, because what's going to happen is you're going to add the classrooms, and then you're going to go into a situation where, well, we want to change the way we do our classrooms, we want to change the programming, and as you do that, you're going to have to spend the rest of the money.
So forgive me, if you're saying 14 to 17 million dollars that needs to be added, and you're saying it could be done potentially slowly, what doesn't, of that, what percentage of that would not have to be done slowly and have to be done fast?
Be done real fast, so anything that touches those seven classrooms, that would all have to be part of that package that goes in there.
Would that include asbestos abatement?
It would be, yeah, yeah. Probably the most expensive thing that number's coming from is the amount of asbestos abatement you'll be doing. It's a lot, yeah. Asbestos abatement is extremely expensive. I want to be very cautious with this too, and not paint a picture that students are in a bad situation around open asbestos. I didn't see anything when we walked around that everything is encapsulated. And what that means is basically, it's not exposed. But when you start to open up walls, the fittings on pipes, the floor mastic that's underneath the six-by, anytime you see a six-by-six tile, the mastic that's underneath it is typically what we call hot, it has asbestos. So when that happens, it's a type of remediation that occurs. And that's true in all your building, just to be clear. I mean, you could go back to Woodstock, you have asbestos there. There's asbestos here, that's pretty typical. Your Hira plan, is what it's called, would tell you exactly where that asbestos is. But David, it's hard to, just to be clear and not to mislead anyone, it's hard to say what state ed would do, but what the danger is, is when you're in the decision-making process, is that is your potential that could happen. They could do that, they could say that, well, we, I wouldn't see them saying, we want all 15 million at one time, but you would have to build a plan for that, yep.
Let's say 10 million wouldn't shock you.
It wouldn't shock me, no, no. I just finished a project that was about 10 and a half million, that I would say Phoenisha's very similar size to, and things like that. And it was required, everything we did was required. Go ahead, Sarah, you got a question?
Yeah, just going back to the Bennett scenario then, would you extrapolate further for the 10 classrooms? It would be exponentially, plus a gym, cafeteria, the whole thing.
That's a good question. So yeah, on the Bennett slide, we're saying 10 classrooms, you don't have, I don't think, as many challenges there. Although, the 10, where are they going? It's probably an outlying building, it's probably a new construction. So that's hard, that's hard to really pinpoint exactly what that would cost. It would still be in that same neighborhood, though. I mean, if you build an outlying building, the whole 10 classrooms, you're talking at least 10,000 square feet, if not two stories, so, you know, you're in the neighborhood of 5 to 7 million for that. And I don't know your current situation as far as your electric loads. Can, you know, can the transformer hold the power for a brand-new building like that? I'm sure if you build a new building, you're going to want air conditioning, that changes your loads, your sewer situation, you know, that's all stuff I didn't get into, that's something that once, I would encourage you, once a decision is made, and the direction you're moving in, is to engage the architects right away, to say, okay, this is what we want to do, this is what we're looking to do, and then start that ball rolling. I hate to lead boards of education to make decisions solely on capital costs, but it is, in your case, a factor that's out there. I'm more, as you can say, kind of leaning on the fact that whatever can be done that doesn't have, because anything over a certain million, and Superintendent McLaren could tell you that, or you as a board could say that, that you're not willing to budget in your budget, means you're going to voters for referendum and approval. And so you can't really make it, I wouldn't recommend you make a decision to do something that's not going to be based on whether or not voters approve something for you to do in the future, that doesn't, it's not probably good math, good science as far as good boardsmanship, let's put it that way, I wouldn't recommend that. But to answer that, you are in that neighborhood, I think you're easily probably at 10 million to do something like that, 5 to 10 million. And by the time you do capital upgrades, and also where's it going, and that's, I'll leave that up to the architects and engineers, not my world. Yes, go ahead, Kristi.
From what we're hearing from the community, for each plan, is it realistic to have, and should we do it, have a detailed financial budget for each scenario that we do?
As far as identifying it in the decision-making side of it?
The way I understand it is, like, the community is asking for, before we decide which ones to do, to have it broken down so that what would be the financial bill on each scenario, so that they can decide which would be better. Is that feasible?
I think Superintendent McLaren could probably do that, as far as, but there's a lot of moving variables. One, of course, is staffing, another one, of course, is the capital. I would look at it more from, I wouldn't make it all about money, I'd make it more about your educational programming, and looking at the fact that when there's only one or two sections at a grade level, your collaborative efforts aren't, is it... I struggle with schools when they start getting under 200. There's a belief that smaller is better. But what happens is, is students are coming into a smaller setting as well. Sometimes having four sections or five sections is the better way to go, teachers have more collaborative abilities at that point in time, rather than just working with one other partner. There's a whole lot of things from your RTI model, your response intervention model, your curriculum building, having more teamwork centered around that. I'd, you know, personally, I would focus more on that. From a money standpoint, I don't know that any one of the scenarios is going to cost you more money, other than the capital side. You know, taking capital off the table, that's kind of why I'm hitting on that. I think any one of the scenarios is going to move you in the right direction financially. I'm just really hesitant ever, I've worked with boards that want to really measure that, and then say, did it really produce that savings? If it's only a money issue, it's not going to deliver on its promise. It's similar to when you do an EPC or an energy performance contract, they tell you what you're going to save. That's in that day's term. What happens is power keeps going up, everything keeps going up, and so do you really see that savings or not? I think any one of your scenarios are going to be, it's about efficiency, obviously, educational programming, and you will see some savings and money. I don't think any of them are going to cost more, like, you're not going to, you're not opening a new building. So all of them will have that scenario. I don't know if I would get that finite to try to measure it. I think you could look at some, and I think you have looked at some numbers that are associated with it, and I would look at what we call object code budgeting, or even function-level budgeting, and I'm sure Superintendent McLaren, with her background, could say, okay, based on this, this is what it kind of looks like, and this is what we would look to expect, again, on a conservative side, yeah.
But you wouldn't expect, before we would make a decision in the future, you wouldn't expect us to have a detailed plan, building plan, like how financially what it would be, and architecturally?
I wouldn't do that, no. I don't know if I would engage an architect to go through that process initially. I would think it would be more, if a scenario, if there's a low-lying, like, no, there's this scenario that works with minimum, with minimum amount of work that has to be done, you know you can do that. The idea of a central campus is going to take some work, you know that. So if you were to close both outside buildings, that's where your architect would come in, where you would have to see what's feasible and what's not feasible, and is that two years out, is that five years out? But moving in incremental steps, I kind of like the incremental step approach, to say, what is the, what is the path that takes you to, you know, and you could measure that. As far as detail, that's the word I'm a little hung up on, Kristi, is how detailed, I would, what they call function or object level, where in general, this is what we'd see in less staff, this is what we'd see in potential savings on transportation, this is what we would see potentially, like, I think I would look for that, rather than saying it's exactly anything. If that, that kind of makes sense, like, what does special education look like in a scenario, like, things like that?
No, I totally get, I just, from some of the stuff I'm hearing from people, what they're asking for is, they, I got the feeling is they wanted a breakdown on what each, exactly what each scenario would detail and cost.
Yeah, and I think it goes back somewhat to the implementation that occurs after the decision. I understand what they're asking for, and it does make sense, and I think you can, you can certainly generalize it to say, you know, this plan, if we were to do this, will potentially create an approximate savings of about $400,000. This plan would potentially decrease, or potentially create savings of $500,000. And this is why, and this is how I got to that number. That's something you could certainly, not to create more work for your superintendent, but that is something that certainly could be built. But I think for the sake of discussion, that's a good point, a good question to bring up, as far as if that's what you're looking for, then what format do you want that in, and what that takes is just some drafting. And understand that that's a moving target too, like anything else. It's, if it was so easy to make decisions right now, and we knew that that was going to happen, you could definitely do it. But the reality is, it's moving target. You could get a new mandate tomorrow that would throw that all off. We all, we all hold our breath on that, you know?
No, I guess I just want to, and just to clarify, and I'm sorry Superintendent Leclerc is not here, but I thought you had asked her for that, Emily, and she thought she could do that, in terms of giving us some savings, but for each scenario, because there was a really, I know the transportation team put some savings plans together, we were just asking, and she asked for some parameters, and there was an exchange about that, and she said she'd be happy to do that. So just, for Kristi's sake, I just want to make sure we know we, that's maybe forthcoming.
But ideally, you don't want us making these deep decisions based solely on cost.
I would recommend you don't make it solely on cost, but if it's a factor that's coming up to you, you're hearing that, sounds like Sarah might be hearing that, then it's worth looking at some generalized data around it.
I think Assistant Superintendent Leclerc did do some, some general numbers for transportation, building maintenance, some savings. But I think what Trustee Taylor was saying was, you know, pointing out, does it make sense to engage an architect and do construction, detailed construction estimates at this point?
I would struggle with that. I think the numbers you're getting, the $300 to $400 a square foot, is really what you're looking, what you're looking at. I think they would probably tell you that too. Again, working with architects every day, you would, you'd have to tell, you'd have to really do some programming, you'd really have to... I do think, Superintendent McLaren, as you move into next year, and a decision has been made, you are going to, I do believe at least, she's going to be engaging architects to come and talk to you a little bit about some different scenarios. I do think that's, that's the case. But whether or not it's part of your decision-making, what you know is your academic space today is your academic space today, and what works with that situation, not trying to add anything or anything like that.
Well, and I just want to say, I think, actually, I think this has been helpful, that even the scenarios and the potential costs, I don't think any of us expected, you know, architectural drawings of each scenario. I think what's helpful is to say, roughly, this is going to cost X dollars, roughly, this is going to cost X dollars, roughly, this is going to cost X, and then here's the savings for each, and we can do the math.
Sure.
But I think it's, maybe, with the help of a human house, I can do the math. But I just think it's, I think it's very critical that we have a good sense of the financial impact of the decision for, regardless, yeah?
So what I would do is add that to a list of, and certainly I can work with Superintendent McLaren and staff on that, let's create kind of a template of, from maybe a personnel side, from a building side, what I'd say, facility side, potential savings, and just know as trustees that those are not exact numbers, those are projections based on 2023, and what current costs are, and the way things are trending. I know your business official is very capable of doing that, I know Superintendent McLaren is, and then I think that would be important, certainly to look at. What I'd be careful with is like FTEs and staffing, just because you don't know what that brings. Not to count on savings from that, at this point, so go ahead.
I thought I would just point out also that, you know, the things noted in the building condition survey don't create innovative classroom spaces.
No.
And so while the building condition survey shows what structural and infrastructure things need to be addressed, and we have been trying to address things over the years as we go forward, it doesn't bring our facilities up to where they should be for our students. They don't provide the spaces that are really inspirational, and that design work would happen with the faculty. The other thing to note is that we are very fortunate, we have been very, very deliberate in terms of the work that we have done. We really have little to no debt. We did do an EPC years ago, and that might be tailing off, but we have no debt right now. But if we were to do a large capital project, as you know, I'm sure, it would be amortized for a significant amount of time, and we would get building aid. So even if we spent X million dollars, we would get our building aid on it, and the payments would be spread over a number of years.
Yeah, how that works, it's minimum of 15, if it's renovation, if it's new space, it can go as long as 30. Just depends on, you know, that your bond counsel would help you with that. She makes a very good point, though, just to, and a little bit I touched on at the beginning, just to be clear, and a building condition survey is very similar to taking your car to a dealership to get an inspection. What makes it safe, you know, so if you have a headlight out, you have to fix it. Cadillac converter missing, you must do it. So you must follow, like, those types of things. But it doesn't mean that your engine's not spitting and sputtering, and it doesn't mean that your car has 400,000 miles on it. They don't care about that, they still will inspect it, and as long as it meets all the safety checklist, that's what a building condition survey is. It is designed to solely identify minimum standard items at state ed. And it's not, it is not by any means innovative learning spaces. It has nothing to do with STEM, it has nothing to do with any type of farm-to-table programs, any type of green spaces. I do a lot of work with districts on building green space, energy-efficient, environmentally-friendly spaces. It has nothing to do with any of that. So keep that in the back of your head. So to that point, is that's where some of that money starts to grow. They look at a kindergarten room at 1,000 square feet, having taught primary grades myself, depending on the number of students, you know, I might want part of the room in carpet and part of the room in your, as they call this, VCT flooring. They don't consider any of that. And again, it's not their fault, that's, that's the way the rules are. Because they want you to address minimum, if you think about this, this makes sense. You know, before you put a, a new, a new front seat in your car, let's make sure that it has a catalytic converter and it can actually be driven. So, they want to make sure before you put new carpet down, that your snow loads are appropriate, your ventilation is appropriate. And obviously, post-COVID, ventilation has become a really big deal. And, and as it should have been for years. Quite honestly, New York dragged behind a little bit. Same thing with secure vestibules, I know you have them, but, you know, they make sure that those are up to snuff. Things like that do come to mind. But they don't really require cameras, they don't require some of those other things. But districts often have them. You'll keep, always keep that in mind, that's a great point, though. And that's your architect's job, not the, not the, you will pay them well to do that. And that's, that's their job, to program that space. So, any other questions around that? So, so what else? There's a couple other slides here I have, but before we get to those, anything else as far as the scenarios? You understand kind of where this was centered around, obviously, enrollment, your ad hoc committee information that you got? If there's any questions surrounding that? Certainly, I mean, we, I have the report, we could bring it up, I mean, anything you want to talk. But the ad hoc committee did a nice job, I think, you know, and they should all be commended. This is tough work to do, it's emotional work. Painting a nice picture, at least, they had some good discussions, there was good feedback from community members, I know were involved, so, with any of that, so, trustee Lynch, go ahead.
Just a, a quick question on the enrollment, or the, the line, the district line, right? Is it relatively even? I know it sometimes it has to, we have to move it, but I know from looking at the transportation maps that the majority of the population is in the eastern part of the district. So, would it be 213, 213 for these, for these, for this, you know, scenario that we're looking at? Or is it typically the, the Woodstock Elementary K through three have a higher population?
This year, Woodstock is higher, and I believe next year it's going to be more similar, and Phoenisha might actually tip up, just based on where we keep moving the line. You know, the, the, the split is artificial. Because otherwise, we would end up with single classrooms in one building, and that's a really terrible instructional space, and that doesn't, that doesn't keep a building viable. So, that's not fair. So, we have, we have continued to move the line so that both buildings have reasonable population.
And that's a good point, too. For the sake of looking at this, you're looking at an even split, but you, you may have 15 one way, 10 the other way, and that, I would suspect will change every year. You'll, you'll see that fluctuation. My understanding is you've been moving attendance boundaries pretty regularly to keep school, keep them both viable, so. I, I don't think that'll have to continue to happen. I think you'll, you'll have a little bit natural, regardless of which way you go, but, you know, that's something always to keep monitoring. And that's the important piece to this, too, is once a decision is made, you move forward with it, it's implemented, it, you know, basically, an implementa- it moves to what I call implementation at that point in time, the board has spoken at that point, it moves to implementation. The implementation plan then becomes very fluid. Superintendent starts to develop that with all your key internal stakeholders and external stakeholders, presents that out regularly, and then you get prepared for that September 1 type of launch of that. And then from that point, though, you're monitoring and adjusting all the way, all the way around the way you're monitoring and adjusting. So, it's, it's, you know, it's the process that you'll be in, you're in that now, though. You're, you're watching that every year right this second. Go ahead.
In your experience, what's the pros and cons of a central campus for an area like this?
So, I've, I've worked with both. One of the, one of the challenge, I wouldn't say a challenge, one of the, where I was in Sydney went to a central campus. The year before I got there, both outlying buildings were closed. The Masonville Elementary School and the Sydney Center Elementary School was, actually, it was two years before I got there. It was closed. Everyone came to one campus, it definitely had its benefits. The challenge became that they had done $5 million worth of work in one building and $4 million in the other building, at a 90% aid route, so it came with an extremely big price tag. So, we had to do some work, that's not going to happen to you. From an educational standpoint, when you start to approach the number of 400 to 500 students and around a K4, K5, K6 standard, you have at least four, usually you have four teachers minimum at a grade level. That gives you a little bit more planning. I'll use the word professional learning community, but basically more collaborative planning, curriculum planning, you have more alignment with your, with your educational program, tending to have, you know, right now, what you have is like outliers. They do work together, I'm not saying teachers don't work together, and you have curriculum, I'm not saying they don't, but you have a little bit more consistency. I would say from the social and emotional side, I just, talking from experience here, I did like a little bit larger schools, because basically, if you have a student that's really struggling with a peer group, it is easier to move them around from a peer group, or it's easier to move peers away from them rather than when you're in a smaller class setting. That's controversial, people might want to argue with me about it, but I would say in reality that having a little bit more flexibility. The cons to it, you have then communities that are coming together, which they do come together already. At the Bennett School, they're all coming at fifth and sixth grade right now. Yeah, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade right now. They're all coming together anyway, so you're, you're, there is an adjustment period. When they're centralized, there is no adjustment, they've started there from the time they were five. So, that, there is some positives to that. The challenge I think you would have to initially move right to that might be the fact that you're going to have to rely on some capital work that's going to need to get done, and I think that's probably a significant number to look at. Could it be done incrementally? Yes. If, if the trends stay where they're at, I think it's going to happen for you. If you continue to see the, the trends fall off. Now, if you see a spike in enrollment, then, you know, it might become a lot more viable with the outside, with an outside building. But I don't see a lot of cons to a centralized campus, not at this size. And keeping in mind that, you know, my experience with large schools, you know, we've had centralized campuses that have 8,000 or 10,000 students in them, which is not anything that we understand here in New York, and those pose a different challenge, which was safety, things like that. You're talking about a centralized campus with 1,100 kids, is what you'd be talking about.
Could you talk for a minute about safety? I assume having a centralized campus, we have one incredible, dedicated, amazing school resource officer, give it up, give it up for-
Any school resource officer, yes.
But he's one, and we, we'd love to clone you. We don't, we'd love to figure it out how to clone you, I would. I'm not getting there, Tom. But, but safety-wise, could you just discuss what it would mean?
So, I, I'm just going to put the superintendent head on for a second. Typically, and usually I have this conversation around bringing seventh and eighth graders into a high school building. A lot of times, I, boards have asked me that, and when they tend to merge to like a 712 building, and how do we keep the seven year, you know, the seventh grader, the 13-year-old away from the 18-year-old, and how do we do that? And so, there's a lot of creativity, I wouldn't say creativity, but there's a lot of ways to do that. First and foremost can be, you know, off-bell schedules to make sure the kids aren't passing each other in hallways, things like that. But you have separate buildings in this case, so really what you'd be looking at is a, you know, a sixth grader and a five-year-old. So, it'd be strategically placing where their special areas are, when are they going to actually cross paths, looking at lunch schedules, looking still at your dedicated entrance, I wouldn't advise changing that. I, I, you know, again, I come from a state where unfortunately, bad things happen a lot. You know, you want one point of entry, you already have that, you have that control. The role of the SRO, not to put them on the spot, changes slightly, the fact of there are, not just because there's more students, but because of the range of, of age. You know, that, that definitely becomes a bit of a factor. But nothing that, again, you're not talking about, you're talking about 400 in some kids, you're not talking, you know, 1,000, 2,000 kids in one school type of thing. So, from a safety standpoint, I think a lot of the rules you have in place are already excellent. I would imagine you have standardized entries in the buildings, whether it's a five-year-old building, an outlier, or whether it's a high school, you've pretty much standardized it. I'm going to use a perfect example, I walked in with two young ladies that were, I'm going to assume you have indoor field hockey going on, it's near and dear to my family, but they walked in, the first thing she did was hit the buzzer, and the door was open, and she stood there for a second, and I just stood there with her, because we're all trained. So, that's, commend that your students themselves, and she turned to me, I might add and say, so are you going in to the building? So, she, she was questioning herself, from the SRO standpoint, on whether or not she should let this guy in the building that she has no idea who it was. And I said, well, I'm going to the board meeting, and then when she pulled the door, it was open. So, I mean, those are the types of things that, you know, just the turning and back and looking. So, your students are, are equipped with that already, your parents know your protocols, I don't think any of that changes. Inside of the building, it comes down to teachers' supervision and staffing. And what I only change, I usually recommend to people, is to watch the passing of, of children. As far as putting, you know, put a sixth grade classroom next to a kindergarten room, doesn't make a lot of sense, and I don't think anyone's going to do that. Where I see it is around libraries, art rooms, music, common, what we call special area classes, physical education, things like that. That, that's probably your only, only thing, but those are internal rules and structures. Cafeteria, I doubt you're going to have 12-year-olds and 5-year-olds eating together. So, I think that's, you know, I think a lot of that's in place. In other words, and, and then again, you probably have a safety committee or someone similar to that, a facilities committee that looks at that stuff on a regular basis. If it's not a safety in general committee, you might have a health and safety or a wellness committee that often looks at that. I hope I answered that, there's a lot of different factors with that. Scheduling is the number one thing.
Just comment that usually our doors are not left unlocked, but we have board meetings, so by law, we have to have our door. But usually in the evenings, our doors are not unlocked. But we also do have a health and safety committee that's required by law, and a C, also a facilities committee, that I'm on both of those, and we have these constant discussions about security.
And so, to give you an, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, I'm sorry. To give you an idea, as part of the implementation plan that your superintendent would be coming up with, obviously, those committees would all need to be involved, and to vet those, to vet those ideas out and some of the specifics. But yes, to your point, it's great to hear that your, your, your doors are locked at night, I will tell you that that is rare. I, I commend you for that, and, you know, I, I get it, tonight's a board meeting, you got to let people in, that just is what it is. But it's, it's, it is nice to see a school resource officer in schools, there are places I travel that there are not. There's a lot of differing versions of school safety. And again, I, I'm from New York State, as you folks know, worked out West for a long time, and have seen some stuff in some large schools, and so, school resource officers for me are a non-starter, so, it's one of the first things we implemented in New York State. It's a good idea, if nothing else, it's a first responder to be able to get, to get help. That's the, that's how I look at it. First and foremost, you know, there's a, there's a little radio, he can click and, and the cavalry will come. And unlike, unlike what sometimes we're able to do. So, again, those are worst-case scenarios, but it's also great for community side of it. And I think, Dave, to your point, that's part of the safety side of this, is, again, continuing to build culture and, and community within your schools. So, I think I answered you, Christie, it's, it's, I don't see a lot of negatives, there's certainly positives to, to not having it too, I'm sure, but I don't think you're in a, I don't think it's, it's a, I'd say I'm indifferent on it, but I think there's, there's certainly positives, and I'm sure there's some negatives to it. Anything else that jumps out?
I have a, a transportation question that I, I don't know that we can answer tonight, and, and that's okay. But over the course of the week, you know, we, we did request the transportation survey be made available tonight, or the transportation presentation from December be made available tonight, because a big part of this conversation is about transportation.
He, he has that as well.
Okay, great, yeah. It's a, you know, a big part of this is about transportation, because we have such a large geographic district and kind of an insane transportation plan that is only navigable because we have a fantastic transportation coordinator. But one of the questions I have for the superintendent, and I don't need an answer tonight, is, in looking at these maps, it's hard for me to tell. I'd like to understand how many children, in, in order to keep the classroom sizes similar in both districts and to have two cohorts in each building, how many children we are busing past Bennett to get to Phoenisha? And how many children, if any, we are busing past Bennett to get to Woodstock? Does that make sense? I, I mean, I, I don't need an answer tonight, but I think it's an important question.
In the ad hoc, in the forum, we have the cafe.
Yeah, I, I read something-
Yeah, I, I just don't see it in here, I'm, I'm just really, and I'm, you know, I'm kind of curious, like, what those numbers are. Because I, I think one thing that, that I did not know until we really started pushing into this was how many children should technically be going to Phoenisha or technically going to Woodstock who are not going to what would normally be considered their home school because of our decline in enrollment? And, and I think that that's a, that is something that is vitally important, because it's not going to change. So, right now, from my understanding, we are taking kids who 10 years ago, had they been at the same address, would have either gone, would have gone to Woodstock, and we're sending them to Phoenisha, and/or kids who would have gone to Phoenisha and sending them to Woodstock. And I think that's a big part of this.
Do you use any routing software or anything? If you have, because you might be able to geo-map them and density map them? I, I don't know, I don't know, use Versitrans or any-
We have that, yeah.
Okay, so that would be a great data-
This particular presentation is not listing the number of students.
Right.
But I believe Trustee Story is thinking that we have done that.
Yeah, that's similar, that's one of the ones I was looking at, that, that density map, yeah. The other thing that, and I'm just, and again, I was speculating, it's a question I kind of had, is, so the number of students on some of the bus runs must be like under 20?
Like 15.
Okay.
12, 13, 10.
So, you're basically, you're running mainly what I call conventional buses, so there's 67, you don't have 83 passi- you're the 67 passengers probably, or 66?
We have some of those and some of the, the smaller 20s.
Smaller 20s, okay. So, your efficiency per mile, I'm obviously, and, and not being a high aid district, you're not being reimbursed at the high levels for your mileage, so, you know, I think that could go into a projection as far as your costs. It must be substantial, because you are, you know, geographic area is geographic area, and a lot of districts in New York struggle with this, but when you're, you know, making a decision, that, that could definitely be a factor, that, like you said, passing, I didn't think of that, but that's a good point, Trustee Sherry, as far as like passing by a school to go to a school type of thing.
I mean, we're, we're running almost 1,300 miles a day, but just between the two elementary schools.
Right.
669 for Woodstock.
Yep.
And 65454 for Phoenisha. With 149 students routed for Woodstock and 127 students routed for Phoenisha. That alone and the cost of that is kind of staggering.
About four miles to the gallon.
Yeah.
And our transportation aid is 6.5%.
Our, our total miles traveled daily is 4,366.
That's, yeah, wow.
And what was the reimbursement that we get? 6.5 from New York State, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's low. That's, yeah.
Am I correct that no matter whether one school or two schools were to close, that it plummets the, the transportation costs within, and, and the, the gas, right now, hopefully it'll change, but gasoline that we're spending that will significantly lower if there's a change?
Yes.
Either, either way?
Correct, our transportation director has projected that whichever scenario is chosen, we will be able to reduce up to 10 bus runs.
Would any of the scenarios extend the, the time a child is on the bus more than they are now, or make them better?
She actually is projecting that they would be better, because we would be more efficient.
Was there, and this may be too early to project, so you're starting in times of schools, are, are they all pretty much the same?
That hasn't been projected to be any-
Hasn't been projected, so, yeah, so that would be, that's a, a way to create some efficiency, yeah, yeah.
Need to go to 830 for argument's sake?
Well, it's a fact, it's, well, I bring it up, you know, only because it's, it's a factor in that efficiency. You know, if you can go to, obviously, you're looking at whether you use common start times, common end times, it's sometimes hard to do that, but if you're sending a bus somewhere, can it bring them one then, rather than bringing multiple routes back and forth? And again, that's something your transportation director can work, I just, I, I ask it more from not knowing myself with that. Transportation, in your case, especially with the 6%, I, I was, I was projecting a little double that, but even at 6%, that's a significant. Transportation is always one of your most expensive departments, and it's not their fault, it's just the cost of fuel, it's the cost of monthly inspections. New York State inspects, it is the only state that I'm aware of, that inspects your school buses every month. So, you know, minor, major repairs are ongoing, you cycle buses every five years, I know a lot of people get upset about that, you might have a few that are a little bit older, but we do that because of rust, any piece- but we do that because of rust. Any piece of rust on and underneath, that bus is shut down immediately. So there's a lot of reasons we do this. I can tell you, having worked Out West, we love New York State auctions for school buses. I literally flew people out here to buy your school buses that were five years old, that would have a hundred thousand miles, and we would drive them for the rest of eternity. There's probably still, twenty years later, some of them on the road with a couple million miles on them, because the diesel engine doesn't wear out, you know, or, or the, or the high-end gas engine. But transportation is certainly a cost factor that, I, I would suspect that. I, I didn't really focus a lot on it. I read your report from December, the presentation, and, you know, I, I think looking at your density alone and then just projecting myself that you couldn't have had more than fifteen or plus kids on a bus run, just by the way you're doing it, they'd have to be small bus runs. Go ahead, there's, go ahead, a couple more slides ahead, yep, keep going. That's the scenario again. So if you go back one, so there is, I do have, and we can put it up if you want, the trustee questions I know that were floating around. If you wanna look at those again, I can certainly put them up there. I've removed the names, the trustee names, as far as that, just for no reason other than to make it flow a little bit better. But if you wanna go through them, those were, I would say FAQs that either you were asking indirectly or someone was asking you. We could certainly go through those, kinda end with that piece of it, if that's worth it. It would like to do that, okay. I, I don't wanna hide anything, this is just the information that was out there. Might have to blow it up a little bit, see if we can see it, see if I can open mine too and read from it. The, the first one, I, I'm, I'm not gonna skip it, it is probably, to me, from an educator's point of view, it's one of the most important ones, but it talks about student achievement. Certainly, I know they can make this available to you. I know there's a, basically, the answer to it was, there certainly can be a presentation as far as talking about student achievement and how students are doing. I'm not saying it's not part, very much part of your decision-making, but that, that question, we can look at the report card, we can look at things like that. What I would say is, I did run off from school report cards, I'll just give you this tidbit, and I don't have that with me. I don't see, and your curriculum person would be the right person to do this more officially with your data, but I don't think you're creating an academic challenge here. And what I mean by that is sometimes when you move buildings around, you have to be careful, because of the way New York State looks at your achievement levels in a new beds number. You have to be cautious of that, and you can get yourself into what they call focused school status. I don't see any of your groups or subgroups underperforming to where, when grouped together, it's gonna create a big problem. I, I didn't notice anything, and, and I'm sure from a curriculum standpoint, they could dig into it more deeply, but nothing, there was no huge red flags there. And, and to be brief with that, for example, if you have in one building, you have ten special education students, let's say in fourth grade, and the other building that you have, and this is not true, but let's say it's twenty, the magic number is thirty. When you bring the two buildings together and they go over thirty, they're now looked at as a category on how they achieve. I don't think this type of change, regardless of your scenarios, is gonna create a high enough, what we call N, to put you into a, an evaluation threshold in any, one of the categories. But again, that was a quick look that I did at it.
Can I speak to this yet? This is, this is my question, I'm happy to talk about it.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
But I, I think what I'm asking about is our current cohort of children in K through five, all of our children, obviously, in K through twelve, are, are behind because of a pandemic, right, that, and our teachers have done an incredible job in terms of like, our ability to, the pandemic tested all of us in terms of our resilience. And I think my question is really about the timing, Bill. I think my concern, my question is like, how, you know, are our kids and are our teachers able to make this move now? When knowing that we are, in some places, we are a grade behind in terms of our students' achievements, right? And our teachers have done, again, heroic work. We taught, we've heard about the phonics curriculum that was introduced and other things that have been done. I just, I, I wanna make sure, and I, I appreciated this incredible and thoughtful answer from our, our staff. I do appreciate it, but it didn't help me understand, where are our kids right now? Because I don't wanna look back ten years from now and say we contributed to the COVID generation by exacerbating this change for young children who have been through a lot, and our teachers who have done an incredible amount of work to try to bring them back up to, to where they need to be. And I, I'm really struggling with that piece of this, and it is about our role in terms of academic impact, correct? I mean, and that is a big piece of what we have to think about. And I, I just struggle with this, because it is about, as you asked, Christie, the difference between community schools and central schools. And central, community schools, you know, are special for the K through two, three grade levels in particular, because there is a different level of involvement in community. There's more parent involvement, you know, the, and, and I just think that that's really critical, and I just don't wanna skip over it. We've talked a lot about the financials, and I, and I understand why we need to change, but I just wanna hear from our teachers and our administration more about whether this particular cohort of children, UPK to fifth grade, is ready for this kind of a change, or is it gonna benefit them? And it, that's a, it's a real possibility, and I, I wanna hold that vision, believe me, but I just really wanna hear honestly about how our kids are doing right now.
And what I would, what I would answer to that, just from the, you know, the, I guess consultant standpoint, is I, I think the potential for improving is greater in, in this scenario like this. And, and I say this one way, not because I think, I think teachers across the country have done a great job post-COVID. I think administrators have as well. But with that being said, I think by consolidating services in some format, whether that's two schools, one school, your instructional coaches, your AIS, all of those supports can be focused on, on those students, rather than trying to do that in, right, currently now, you're doing that in three, basically three separate locations across K five. So you're asking someone to travel around, whether that be occupational therapy, social working, any of those. By, and I'm not advocating, I'm not advocating any scenario, but if you can minimize the amount of that, the amount of travel, the amount of staff that are involved with that, and you can centralize those students a little bit more, and I'm not saying a central campus is, is your decision right now, but even if it's down to just closing one building, I think that improves your RTI model, I think it improves your academic model.
RTI, just for?
Is response to intervention. So students that are targeted below, New York State likes the word AIS. I don't like to use the word AIS. AIS is dictated from a state test score. I don't like that. I'd rather be internal with teachers, saying these students are struggling, and then build, build strategies around improving those students' specific achievement, and then teachers collaborating and doing that. The more you can bring teachers together, you're really good at one thing, I'm really good at something, and another teacher's really good at another thing. What we wanna do is if I'm good at fractions, and you're good at poetry, and my students struggle on poetry, then so we wanna come to you to help me help those students. I think you're strung out a little bit, what I, and what I mean by that is you're spread out a little bit with your numbers, and I think any one of the decisions will improve that. Now, that's gonna take great coordination from your curriculum department, which, you know, and, and your leadership to do that. But I think as a board member, that is important to expect that, too. So regardless of the scenario that you decide to vote on, the expectation would be is how are we looking at student achievement now in this movement? Where's our current situation? What does it look like? And then how do we do it moving forward? What, what is that gonna look like? And I'm not trying to work for anybody, but I think that's, that is one of the key roles of a board of education, is to monitor student achievement. You know, what does this do with attendance? What does it look like? All of those factors should be on the table and we're, and regularly reported, you know. But I, I do think your potential by increasing the numbers is a, is a step in the right direction, to focus your, to focus your staff on those items. Does that kinda make sense? You know, I, again, it's, I can make it sound real good, but the reality is, I think I said right up there, four reading teachers, yep. So, you know, think about if you could increase the number of students they're working with, and they can impact. You know, that, that would certainly improve that, so. But that's a great question, though, and I commend you, and definitely, I don't wanna dismiss student achievement. That's especially, and I also don't wanna dismiss special education students. That's a huge, that is very personal, as the board knows to me personally, and fight and advocate for students all the time, and I do think this move can improve, can, can make your program even better. By, I, I'm a big believer in students should be with their typical peers, regardless of their disability. I don't wanna get on a soapbox, so I'll stop there, but it's, it's a personal belief of mine, but, go ahead, yes, Christie, sorry.
Not really a question for you, I guess, just maybe a slight rebuttal. Like everybody here, I have not advocated for one scenario over the other. But the, the argument of COVID, it's not now we're doing this. Like all these plans, the earliest possible would be twenty twenty-four, which is, you know, not around the corner. But I don't wanna use COVID as a crutch and constantly go saying that, because COVID happened, we can't do this. Or the argument that a community school against a central, like, eleven hundred kids, a central campus, whether we do it or not, is a community school. We have to stop segregating ourselves to the Woodstock people, the Phoenisha people, the Olive people. We're Nantiora, and that's where we have to start thinking about. And the argument that to just keep breaking us up into that little bit, I think it just makes the animosity more. Like, we have to stop thinking of that, and we have to get, I'm sorry, as a registered nurse, we have to move past COVID. We have to let the kids grow, and I think we're stunting them by constantly telling them that they have to be afraid, and because this happened, you can't move on. They look at us and they see where, how we're reacting, and how we're acting is gonna make them think they can move on or they can't. We have to move forward.
I love it, and I agree with you, but I, you can't deny the facts that student achievement nationally and globally has fallen behind because of the, what happened, and we were all interrupted. So I just wanna know where we are, Christie, that's it.
Oh, no, I totally get it, but we have an opportunity to perhaps rocket our children forward to make their opportunities more, no matter which scenario it is.
And it is, it is a good opportunity while you're making the change and during this year of transition to identify, you know, you as a board of education, to say, define what student achievement means to you. You know, New York State likes to use their state test scores, I'll, I'll leave that alone. You know, there, there are a lot of minimum standards embedded in that, but what does it mean for Nantiora? When you, when you say an exceeding student in Nantiora, what does that mean to you? And I think that's, that's important, like, how do you assess that? So that's more than the test score, that's, that's a community leader, that's watching what we just watched to start here. That's all of those things together, so, so it's a good opportunity to, to, to kinda hit a bit of a reset and build that culture, as you said, that's very well said, I would agree. You know, culture is built, and whether it's multiple communities, and I did live that myself in, in the district I was in, you'll have to break some walls down, for sure, but I, I think that's a, that's a really good point. The second question is really hard to answer, there's a good answer. The second one was about eliminating jobs and things like that, that's always the fear, and it, I, I totally get that. Work a lot with it. You know, the answer is basically, you know, we'll have to plan a timeline for that, protect as many jobs as possible. The reality is mobility of people in New York State, as far as employment in, in our K twelve world right now, is high. I work in a lot of districts that are worried about morale, because people leave. The reality is right now is jobs are plentiful, and so people do move around. Not, not always because they hate the district they work with, they move around. Generational research supports that, there, there's, there's a lot of that moving around. So it's hard to say today, there's gonna be X number of positions lost, X number of this. It's safe to say that when the time comes to staff, which is almost a year from now, a little, maybe eleven months from now, that, that'll be, you'll be involved as a board of education, and obviously, your superintendent will be making staffing recommendations and, and FTE recommendations, and you'll move forward from there. I mean, that's really from there. I mean, the answer that's there is, is very good, as far as, you know, it's difficult covering all of the runs and buses and things like that, but it really will come down to what your staffing needs are at that time. But you, to, to be clear, you currently do that. You currently do that. If you have a special education student that moves into the district or comes from another school that has specialized needs and needs a nurse or needs a professional, you're hiring them right now. So I don't see any of that changing, but I also don't wanna sugarcoat it. You, you are reducing footprint, and that, that's the reality of, of, of what you're doing, so. But those are, those are decisions that are coming. They're, they're very hard to predict right now, though. The next one you had was about scenario costs, which I think we've, we've hit on that, and I think we, and you can see that those are some of the numbers that I know I generated in there for you as well. But I think, I think we left with kind of a task of breaking down some costs in your different scenarios, which I think we can do. Fourth one, the ad hoc committee wanting to address basic implementation plans, and the answer to that was no. What I would say, what I would say here are possibilities of, of a specific property in this case. What I would say is the ad hoc committee, this is my recommendation to you, is the work was to look at the different scenarios, to focus on the different scenarios, bring the whole thing together, and make some, make a presentation what they did. They put together a nice report. I'm not saying thank you, now you're fired. What I'm saying is, is that that work part has been done for you to make a decision now as part of the implementation. Once you make a decision, I would, I would charge your superintendent to say, okay, now this is how I'm gonna develop an implementation plan, and I know her well enough to know that there'll be stakeholders involved with the implementation. So to answer that, it's two ways. They themselves, the group that you saw, probably won't be part of it, but maybe some of them will be part of it, if that makes sense, because the implementation will take a lot of different stakeholder groups to, to get all the kinks out, and, and how she decides to do that, of course, we'll be presenting that to you, and that's just a little bit down the road, if that makes sense.
And just to be clear, because I think there's some, some misconception about this. The ad hoc committee is a data point in a decision-making process.
Correct.
It's not a dictate.
No.
And it's also a relatively small sample size, roughly four percent, I think, who participated in it, even though it's fantastic that they did. But it's, it's small numbers overall.
Yeah, David, that's a great point. I mean, the, anytime you, you, these are variable data points. So is a Cornell study, so is some of the comments I'm making, so are some of the feelings that you have. These are all data points, as the board as a whole adhere, to make your decision. They're, they're one snapshot in time. That was a board sanctioned committee that went out and exhausted themselves on different areas. They brought back the report to you. They were as accurate, as factual as they could be, and they're reporting that information back to you, yeah. That is one data point, very similar to anything else, a shared decision-making committee or anything else, where you're, you're sharing data. It's up to you as the individual board member at that point to disaggregate the importance of any one of those data points in your personal, in that case, your decision as a board, board member. That's a good point, though. The fifth one was around demographics and the potential for growth and things like that. I think we showed a little bit of that on the projection. I know your superintendent had mentioned sixty-two is projected for next year. We're showing a number of seventy-five to leave some room for growth, which is a significant, and percentage-wise, from sixty-two to seventy-five. Those are some data points in there. I do think, just to be real straightforward with you, you'd have to see some real significant growth to really derail any one of the plans that you're looking at, and I think I shared that with you before. If you just do the math, you, you would have to see a fifty percent district-wide growth. You'd have to be up around the seventeen hundred student range to really create havoc in your plan. And I don't see that happening overnight. If you were to trend upward, then you adjust accordingly over the next few years, but I, I don't know that, I don't know that I've ever seen that. In this state, I've not seen that. Even in the, even in the hyper, we call it the growth corridor up there, like I mentioned before, the, the Ballston Spa, the areas like that, that I've seen some growth. The University of Albany, Albany University, has seen some, the, the surrounding districts have seen some growth, but that's around jobs that have been dragged in. The county I, I live in has seen the same type of reduction you have in, in students. So I don't think you're gonna see that, but I would say all your scenarios are, are built in a way that they can adjust to a significant amount of growth. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just was gonna add, I, this was another one of my questions, but I found some data recently, because I know this is a big question from the community as well, is about this, you know, were we taking into account the new families that have come here and the potential, you know, baby boom that's happened because of the pandemic and during the pandemic? And I, my question here was also the phenomenon about remote work.
Yeah, the remote work.
And whether that's here to stay or not, and does that also potentially create another opportunity for growth? I would also add, there's a, there is some, you know, new development, we know from, in like the I Park Eighty-seven in Kingston, and attracting businesses, is that a third area for growth? If all of those three things would stick, we still would have room for potentially, you know, thirty to fifty percent growth per grade, and, and I think that that's really important for everybody to hear, because it's no one's intention not to count the new families that are coming. In fact, we welcome them and we're excited about having them. I think the, the, the question is really about, yeah, space. And I'll just add that my point here about remote work, there was a new study that just came out nationally that said actually about seventy-five percent of private sector businesses are sticking with remote work, but it's not five days a week.
Correct.
It's, you know, it's a, like a, a three-day-a-week option.
It's a hybrid model.
It's a hybrid option, and so I, I just wanted to add that, that, that there's new national data that just came out, but that there is, that it's actually really hard to quantify. Of course, that's just private sector, we're thinking, you know, if you look at public sector and other things as well, they were literally looking at like the Castle Card companies and other ways to get that kind of data.
Yep.
It's very hard to get this data, and I just commend the superintendent for doing the legwork with our preschools and daycares and other ways, pediatricians' offices, other things we've been trying to do creatively to try to capture this new growth. And again, I just, I, I want the community to know that we worked hard to try to ensure that the data was representative, that the data was representative. And, and again, even with all three scenarios potentially bringing us a huge demographic shift, I still think we have space to absorb them.
Well, just, wouldn't you expect that if there was a potential boom, and I call it the phantom boom, because I don't think it exists, wouldn't you see, expect to see a uptick in the kindergarten rather than a reduction in three years out of COVID? In fact, also, the way I just did some quick math, and Phoenisha enrollment could increase by 66%, and we'd still have fewer students than the building had in 1998, Woodstock could more than double, and it would not approach its apex.
Yeah, I think that's the building, all your scenarios have room for the growth. You know, you know the initial needs, depending on what decision you make, you have some buildings that need space right now. In the current situations, you have some buildings where you could easily move kids and not have to build anything initially. But as far as addressing growth, future growth, you... The state would say you have more capacity than you would, you'd have to more than double more than likely. I... It's hard to find your 1994 calculation of building capacities. It's hard, because you've done some work at this school, obviously you've added some space and things, and because you're not a high-yield district, it is hard to track your square footage. But based on that, you have plenty of opportunity for growth here. I think what typically challenged, I'm gonna speak from experience here, what typically is challenged before the growth, or before the numbers in your classrooms and the numbers in your building, will be your supplemental things, such as, and this is where I think you'll know that trend is trending up. You will start to hear the cries, you're already probably hearing cries around daycare, childcare situations for parents, and support systems outside of the 176 school day calendar, because basically that's what you're looking at, is 176 days. So what are parents doing with kids? That's a, that is a community issue. I know a lot of schools try to solve it, a lot of people try to push it on the schools to solve the problem of childcare, but you're in the education business, childcare is an important part, we all have to go to work, but at the end of the day, it is what it is. And so that's where you usually feel it first. The other piece to this is, you know, your superintendent is connected to legislators and things like that. They know, they will know of things way before things happen. Like, you don't just put a development in, you'll know that, you'll be aware of this growth. I don't want to say it won't happen, but I don't, it's not an overnight phenomenon. You're not, this is not Nashville, Tennessee, where they're knocking down 700 acres and putting 1,000 homes in next month. That's not happening. Not to mention you will fight that tooth and nail, your communities, if hypergrowth was to come in, if you think about that. That is a whole nother world of growth. So I don't see it. But it's important to monitor. Again, it comes back to the good leadership, that's being monitored by your business official, that's being monitored by your superintendent, and you as a board are looking at that, too. The sixth one, talking about the ad hoc committee discussion implementation plans, very similar to the one before. I'm not blowing through it, but just for the sake of time, you can see, it's a lot of what we've been talking about, like what construction would look like and things like that. The reality is you would have, you'd have pretty significant upgrades to bring them all to Bennett. Initially, you'd have a significant cost to bring a lot of students to Phoenisha, you'd have a significant cost. Those are just two factors there. Those are just realities. Moving down, talks about Dr. Baumann's report in the ad hoc committee. This is again backed on enrollment numbers. We've talked a little bit about this, we certainly talk more if you want, but I think it's... This is the point that I think David just made, there is space in the calculations, regardless. Fully understand potential enrollment numbers, we've given a snapshot in time earlier. Phoenisha's the only one to close, what's the cost savings? And we talked about that, that that's something that superintendent will work on. Again, I'm not trying to blow through this quickly, I'm more, I don't want to reopen up the same ones that you're talking about. Stop me if you... Significant layoffs, that was the one we said before, that'll have to be addressed through implementation. Obviously, you're gonna protect as many jobs as possible. We're in the human capital business. As I remind everyone, K-12 education, 85% of our budgets minimum go to human capital. So we understand, you understand, your superintendent understands, your business official, you are an employer, you are a large employer, and that's always the goal. Phoenisha, move Benetza Bennett's, these are more some of the same questions. Comprehensive district-wide capital plan, that's what I would say, is once you've made a decision, then I would, I'm not going to take over your superintendent's job, she's very capable of it, but the next step would be the implementation plan, looking at facilities, things like that. Real cost projections on renovations, like I said, the $300 to $400 square foot is something we use on a daily basis. I added 15% for your county, looking at your prevailing wage, because it's 15% different than what our estimator uses in our office, so that's where that number is coming from, just to give you an idea. Central campus cost is one, and I think I kind of blew through them. You have this document, though, as well. So is there anything else that missed there? I mean, again, I'm not trying to move through them that quickly, it's just I think some of them we've talked about at length, but let's take of that, so... So if you want to switch back to the presentation, there's only one slide left anyway. So anything else you can think of as far as that? And then the next slide is just gonna say your next steps, as far as if you want to talk about that, or whether or not you want to... What I heard tonight, let me kind of summarize this, is what I heard is that there's a little bit of information that you've requested around finances that superintendent can put together and get that out to everyone, and I'd encourage just to make that public as well. You know, I would be, it's gonna be vague, it's gonna be general, but I think we have an understanding that that's what it's gonna be. The student achievement conversation, you certainly could, you could explore that some more. What I would say is, you know, until you make a decision, it's hard to really dig deep, but I would say that that's always is your first focus, is student achievement and the experience for students. So I think that's important, too, keeping the forefront. I would expect that more in the implementation plan than I would necessarily right now as a decision-making. I mean, one of the challenges, I would say, not to create more work, but it's easy for me to do that and then get in the car and drive home, is to say, you know, one of the expectations is, as we do this, is how can we improve the educational environment? What's our opportunity here to do that? Let's not lose, let's not lose an opportunity here. Let's not just get so focused on moving kids around. This isn't a warehouse industry, this is around education, so how can we do that? So those are some of the challenges that I'm sure the staff, that those are exciting, by the way, those are exciting internal conversations to have. Budget season's not exciting conversations to have. It's, all that jazz doesn't even ring a bell with that stuff. Those are two things I heard. So the big thing is, is that if there's information that you're missing, because that was one of the goals we had here at the beginning, if there's information that you're missing, regardless of what resolution or what recommendation came to you, because it's important that basically you're going to be taking action on something. And so now the next step is, is what that something is, or if there's multiple varieties of that, or what that comes from, that's your next steps. But if you're missing information, that's the time, too, to digest that and get that out to your leadership, your president, your vice president, to then be able to get you more information. Does that kind of make sense? I don't want to talk in code here, but basically, if you're missing something and you're not ready to move forward, this is the opportunity for people to get you information. And then, as I say to every board, you know, you, I'm not implying you are unanimous on one thing or another. These are always emotional decisions, these are always challenging decisions. What I do say is, is speak as a board, and whether that's split votes or whatever, whatever that decision is made, then all of you get behind it and you move forward, and then that supports the superintendent and her staff to be able to say, okay, so now we get into implementation mode. This is not one of those, I'll tell you, it is a lot more fun to cut ribbons on brand-new schools than it is to do what we're doing tonight. So I get it, I get it, this is tough, but if you're missing some information, this is a good time to either direct that back to your board leadership so they can get it for you, and then start to talk about your next steps. Any other thoughts, anyone has?
Just personally, I think you do a great job, and you've made a lot of things clear for this board, and you've helped me personally try and grow as a board member and understand things. I just want to thank you personally.
I appreciate that, thank you. I appreciate that. Anything else? So what I would just leave with then, Emily or President Sherry, is just anything that comes from the, anything that you have as board members, you're missing a piece or things like that, to get that to your board leadership so it can be effectively and transparently kind of shared among you, and then, and any help I can be with that, of course, I'll help your superintendent with that. Okay? Absolutely, I, you know, thank you, for allowing me to come and do this. It's, I do enjoy doing this, it's kind of a putting the old hat on a little bit, and I do appreciate everyone's patience. I know this can be tough to watch, but, you know, any way I can support you, obviously, through this, just let me know right there to help you.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate you coming down, Bill, and for all the support you've given us over the last, you know, school year, because this has been an incredibly difficult and emotional decision, and it certainly helps to have someone who is not actually a member of the district to discuss things with and process with and work with all of us to try to achieve some cohesion. Is everyone sure that they don't have questions for Dr. Bill before he's done? Okay. And if you do have questions, you will get them to Cindy and I so that we can help you get answers. Yeah. Okay. Thank you so much, Dr. Christensen. Okay, the board is gonna take a five-minute break and come back and start over. District Clerk, we would like to add a re- a resolution to replace item 12.01. What's that? Did you not hear me? 12.03. Okay. We'd like to add a resolution to the consent agenda to replace item 12.03, be it resolved that the personnel agenda, item 12.03, shall be revised to replace the termination of Sheera Rebecca with the resignation of Sheera Rebecca, with an effective date of June 30th, 2023. May I have a first? Trustee Wallace, second, trustee Bishop, all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. The Board of Education hereby accepts the minutes of the April 11th, 2023 Board Meeting, may I have a first? Trustee Ramonda, second, trustee Bishop, questions or comments? All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. And the superintendent will update the Board on District News.
Good evening. I will try and keep it a little short. An additional reminder, even though we got an incredible preview, please come and see our production of the teen version of Chicago, Friday night at 7:00 PM, Saturday night at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 1:00 in the afternoon. Additionally, Assistant Superintendent Laffin and I were privileged to sit through a couple of student presentations yesterday, the students who are seeking the seal of biliteracy. We got to watch a couple. The students we were able to watch presented to a committee of faculty members, and their presentations were done entirely in Spanish. They each had a PowerPoint on their topic of choice, and then they responded to questions. They were all incredibly poised and did a really wonderful job, and it was a really great experience to be able to witness. Last week, I was able to attend the combined Ulster County School Boards Association Annual Dinner Meeting and the Ulster BOSI's Annual Meeting with trustees Story and Bishop. As always, the meal was outstanding, it was created by the students in the culinary program. We were also able to hear directly from several students regarding the value of the programs that they are able to attend in BOSI's. The students who presented were just really well-spoken and reinforced the importance of continuing to provide a diverse range of opportunities for all students. BOSI's often provides programs that we cannot provide just due to an efficiency of scale, and we really appreciate being able to offer these programs to our students. And as I have said previously, we are certainly entering the busiest time of the year, there will be ceremonies, celebrations, and performances in all of our buildings, so please check the website and attend as many as you can, there is so much to celebrate with our students.
Thank you, Superintendent. Does anyone have questions for the Superintendent? No? Okay. Ms. Krendel could not be with us tonight, and we send her our love and appreciation. Does anyone have Board District News? Right? Thanks. Yes, Sarah, trustee Luntz.
Sorry, trustee Sherry. I just wanted everyone to know that the Olive Library is hosting a clothing swap on April 29th for men, women, and children, and you can drop your clothes off beforehand as well. You don't have to drop anything to shop, so come and enjoy on April 29th at the Olive Library. I think it's 10 to 4, it's pretty much all day.
And if there are leftover clothes from the Olive Library swap, they should go on May 6th to the football team, who is doing their annual, now annual clothing donation collection fundraising opportunity. Clothing, linens, yeah, anything that's material-based, and I think even handbags in front of the high school on May 6th. Anyone else? Okay, the Board would like to acknowledge the public-beheard comments from the last meeting, Phyllis Evans, Lauren Travinsky, Jackie Hansel, Molly Heakin, Rick Wolf, Megan Brenner, and Cara Kalivas. Public and students may comment on any agenda or non-agenda item, the Board appreciates hearing from the public, including students on any agenda or non-agenda item. Please understand that by our adopted parliamentary procedure, the Board can't engage in discussion or answer questions during public beheard. Please know that we hear you and take all of your comments into consideration, the Board does reserve the right to correct any inaccuracies or misinformation during public beheard. Please limit your comments to three minutes, be civil, and do not name any particular individuals or promote any commercial ventures or products. People wishing to express individual student or personnel concerns can bring them to the Superintendent's attention in private. As we've done, as we've done for the last couple of meetings, the microphones will be turned off after three minutes, and anything that you have remaining can be given to the District Board Clerk. Marielle Melnick?
Good evening. My name is Marielle Melnick, I'm the mother of a kindergartner at Fenicia Elementary. I'm also a former elementary school teacher who taught outside this district, and I'm here tonight as a parent and an educator to explain the significant impact of the ripples in Fenicia's small pond on the greater ecology of the Anteora School District. At the dinner table last night, I asked my daughter what she would say if an alien spaceship just happened to land at Fenicia Elementary and wanted to destroy it, and she told me that they can't, because it's the best school ever. And when I asked her why, she started talking about the staff in concentric circles. She started with her kindergarten teacher, Mrs. Lamonda, and she went out to the supporting staff, and by name, named the neighboring kindergarten teacher, all the specials teachers, went up through second-grade teachers, and then finally landed on Principal Thallow. It's really impressive. My daughter knows what she's talking about, too, because she's what you might call a school connoisseur already at kindergarten. Fenicia is her third school, and when she entered it, she already believed that she was an innately bad kid. She was running away at school, she would refuse to write, even her own name. As a mother, heartbreak became a daily exercise, most days, she left the house in tears and returned to me wailing while a staff member barraged me with a list of her new offenses. I was sure my daughter would never like school, and I worried about so much more. I was certain we were doomed, because the schools that left my daughter and myself in shambles are good schools. I can't begin to describe the relief my family feels now, what a testament to the unique power of Fenicia Elementary. My daughter awakens happy to get ready, she reads and writes enthusiastically, and she bounds out of school with a smile on her face. From the principal to the TAs, I see my sensory-seeking daughter greeted with hugs and getting the message that she needs the most, which is that she's loved, and she needs this in order to learn. I see students K through 3 come up to her, knowing her by name, and complimenting her on anything from her dance moves to her art. Sometimes she whispers, "I don't even know who that was," but they know her, and that's important. As a teacher, it's clear that the distinctive intimate culture of this school enables staff to embrace my child's quirkiness with tenderness rather than fear her lack of conformity. They can greet her less desirable behaviors with gentility, and have even encouraged me to see the, like, the humor in some of her behaviors. Clearly, this culture trickles down from staff to the student body, and as an educator, I know that children like my daughter, and there are many in this district, need to feel this connection to staff and school to begin to learn. Love, positivity, and academic success become the behaviors these children repeat because they are Fenicia's focus. This outstanding school finally taught my child what others have failed to convey.
Ms. Melnick, thank you.
She is smart, and she is good. Thank you.
Tess? Ariel McGrath?
Thank you. Oh, thank you. I understand the enormity of the decisions you have to make for this district, and I greatly appreciate your time and efforts to move our district forward. My name is Ariel McGrath, I'm the speech pathologist at Fenicia Elementary. I'm also an alumni of Anteora, a parent of future Anteora students, and finally, an alumni of West Hurley Elementary, and as such, I can attest to the fact that your decision will be deeply impactful and long-lasting. We have two incredible community schools at the K-3 level, which are the anchors of our district, both of which have been recognized on local and state levels for superior education. As someone who's worked in both schools, I can assure you that both schools are filled with hard-working compassionate staff who care deeply for their students and for one another. In fact, we at Fenicia often address building-wide emails to faculty and staff as Dear Fenicia Family, because that's what we are, a family. The love we as staff have for these children, as well as the love the Fenicia community has for these children, is palpable. I could spend hours detailing the events put on by our community or our PTA or our staff that make us so very special, but I don't have that kind of time, so the point I want to make is this: Whatever decision you choose to make, please ask yourselves, is it equitable? Because as I'm sure you would agree, every student matters regardless of their zip code or socioeconomic status. Your decision has the power to either divide and polarize these communities or to strengthen them. You can send the message that you care for each and every student in this district and the communities which love and support them. My hope for this district moving forward is either to support two community schools, which can both accommodate K-5 as they have accommodated K through 6 with larger enrollment in the past, or restart and create one new unified school with our entire Anteora community loving and supporting it. But only shutting down one anchoring community school sends a clear message to its students, staff, and community that they matter just a little bit less. So again, I implore you to please make a decision that is equitable, because every student matters. Thank you.
Robert Halbeck?
Good evening. My name is Bobby Halleck, and I've been teaching here in Fenicia since the beginning of my career, from the moment I walked through... Can you take time back? From the moment I walked through the front doors of the Fenicia School, I was welcomed by friendly faces and greeted with kind words, happy children and beautiful artwork. It was clear that the culture and climate of this K-6 school was one I wanted to work in. And so that being said, we currently have 18 classrooms, including the modulators, so 16 without. Average classes were about 18-plus students during most years, now we're talking K-5, so not quite sure why we should add 5 to 7 classrooms. All right, moving on. Fifteen years later, I find myself working in the same school, now K-3, that I love. The Fenicia Elementary community, from the teachers to the staff, the PTA and beyond, have always come together to create an academically rich and engaging environment for all our students. It's evident through the extensive research that's been done, that student population in our district has decreased, so there's no denying that there are shifts that should be made in the district to account for these changes. But closing Fenicia Elementary School, the home school for many of our students, should not be one of them. I've been fortunate enough to sit in on numerous meetings in Fenicia, and I've even led some committees, I'm sorry, such as PBIS. This program was put in place throughout our district to bolster positive behaviors in our school. The Fenicia staff not only implemented the program, but enhanced it. Each year, the team planned a kickoff where we would explain the mission of acting responsible, caring, respectful, and honest through a game show, and then have students work together in grade levels to solve problems cooperatively. Another program that is near and dear to our school is Cool School. This was brought to life by our fantastic PTA through the years, where community members and staff can sign up to teach an after-school class to our students. Students can learn to cook, engineer with Legos, create beautiful pottery, play basketball, and create works of art through the use of their imaginations. The Fenicia PTA has created endless possibilities for extended learning outside the regular school day. I'd be remiss if I didn't even mention the Spirit Weeks in Fenicia, that are like no other Spirit Weeks I've ever seen or been a part of. The staff, along with the PTA's help and support, plan two weeks a year where students not only dress up in a wacky way each day to celebrate the school spirit, but they're engaged in assemblies where they can participate in trivia, listen to a read-al-out, watch teachers humiliate themselves, and perform variety show acts with their classes. We've had kindergarteners sing songs, first graders perform dances, second graders recite poetry, and third graders memorize lines to perform plays. Other community events include Western Night. We have a year-round bingo event for kids to get free books. We have a beautiful thriving community garden where students and community members can plant and harvest organic fruits and vegetables to eat. We've even had volunteers come and teach our students about the science of plant growth and nutrition. Several years ago, many community members even came together to build a labyrinth in our back garden, and let's of course not forget our new playground. Fenicia Elementary School is more than just a school, it's a community that continues to flourish on the foundations of collaboration within the community, both large and small, cultural responsiveness.
Thank you, Mr. Halleck.
Hillary Partridge?
Hi. My name's Hillary Partridge, and this feels like deja vu. I'm currently a teacher at Fenicia and have had the good fortune to work at all of the elementary schools in the district, including West Hurley. I can attest that the moving statements that were read to you by my colleagues from Woodstock at the last meeting, everything that they said so eloquently about the wonders of their school holds true with Fenicia as well. I have been through district reconfiguration and school closing before, and I know how divisive it can be. It is such an emotional topic that is, that is being done for financial reasons, it is hard to equate children, communities, and experiences with dollar signs. We all understand that there has been declining enrollment for many, many years, and that something must be done, but what? The district spent many thousands of dollars to hire experts, compile data, hold forums, do surveys, and yet the decision is still left to you. Whatever you choose will be criticized by some and applauded by others. I truly hope that in the end, we can all come together as a district and an Anteora community and move forward. I would ask that you consider keeping both Fenicia and Woodstock open as the anchor schools at either end of the geographically enormous district, closing just one of the neighborhoods[1350.48]
Thank you. Thank you. I understand the enormity of the decisions you have to make for this district, and I greatly appreciate your time and efforts to move our district forward. My name is Ariel McGrath. I'm the speech pathologist at Phoenisha Elementary. I'm also an alumni of Antiora, a parent of future Antiora students, and finally, an alumni of West Hurley Elementary. And as such, I can attest to the fact that your decision will be deeply impactful and long-lasting. We have two incredible community schools at the K-three level, which are the anchors of our district, both of which have been recognized on local and state levels for superior education. As someone who's worked in both sho- schools, I can assure you that both schools are filled with hard-working compassionate staff who care deeply for their students and for one another. In fact, we at Phoenisha often address building-wide emails to faculty and staff as Dear Phoenisha Family, because that's what we are, a family. The love we as staff have for these children, as well as the love the Phoenisha community has for these children, is palpable. I could spend hours detailing the events put on by our community or our PTA or our staff that make us so very special, but I don't have that kind of time. So the point I want to make is this. Whatever decision you choose to make, please ask yourselves, is it equitable? Because as I'm sure you would agree, every student matters regardless of their zip code or socio-economic status. Your decision has the power to either divide and polarize these communities, or to strengthen them. You can send the message that you care for each and every student in this district and the communities which love and support them. My hope for this district moving forward is either to support two community schools, which can both accommodate K-five, as they have accommodated K-through-six with larger enrollment in the past, or restart and create one new unified school with our entire Antiora community loving and supporting it. But only shutting down one anchoring community school sends a clear message to its students, staff, and community that they matter just a little bit less. So again, I implore you to please make a decision that is equitable, because every student matters. Thank you.
Robert Halbeck?
Good evening. My name is Bobby Halick, and I've been teaching here in the Phoeni- in Phoenisha since the beginning of my career. From the moment I walked through... Can you take time back? From the moment I walked through the front doors of the Phoenisha School, I was welcomed by friendly faces and greeted with kind words, happy children and beautiful artwork. It was clear that the culture and climate of this K-six school was one I wanted to work in. And so that being said, we currently have eighteen classrooms, including the modulators, so sixteen without. Average classes were about eighteen-plus students during most years. Now we're talking K-five, so not quite sure why we should add five to seven classrooms. All right, moving on. Fifteen years later, I find myself working in the same school, now K-three, that I love. The Phoenisha Elementary community, from the teachers to the staff, the PTA and beyond, have always come together to cre- create an academically rich and engaging environment for all our students. It's evident through the extensive research that's been done that student population in our district has decreased. So there's no denying that there are shifts that should be made in the district to account for these changes. But closing Phoenisha Elementary School, the home school for many of our students, should not be one of them. I've been fortunate enough to sit in on numerous meetings in Phoenisha, and I've even led some committees, I'm sorry, such as PBIS. This program was put in place throughout our district to bolster positive behaviors in our school. The Phoenisha staff not only implemented the program, but enhanced it. Each year, the team planned a kickoff where we would explain the mission of acting responsible, caring, respectful, and honest through a game show, and then have students work together in grade levels to solve problems cooperatively. Another program that is near and dear to our school is Cool School. This was brought to life by our fantastic PTA through the years, where community members and staff can sign up to teach an after-school class to our students. Students can learn to cook, engineer with Legos, create beautiful pottery, play basketball, and create works of art through the use of their imaginations. The Phoenisha PTA has created endless possibilities for extended learning outside the regular school day. I'd be remiss if I didn't even mention the Spirit Weeks in Phoenisha that are like no other Spirit Weeks I've ever seen or been a part of. The staff, along with the PTA's help and support, plan two weeks a year where students not only dress up in a wacky way each day to se- to celebrate the school spirit, but they're engaged in assemblies where they can participate in trivia, listen to a read-al-out, watch teachers humiliate themselves, and perform variety show acts with their classes. We've had kindergarteners sing songs, first graders perform dances, second graders recite poetry, and third graders memorize lines to perform plays. Other community events include Western Night. We have a year-round bingo event for kids to get free books. We have a beautiful thriving community garden where students and community members can plant and harvest organic fruits and vegetables to eat. We've even had volunteers come and teach our students about the science of plant growth and nutrition. Several years ago, many community members even came together to build a labyrinth in our back garden. And let's of course not forget our new playground. Phoenisha Elementary School is more than just a school. It's a community that continues to flourish on the foundations of collaboration within the community, both large and small, cultural responsiveness.
Thank you, Mr. Halick. Hillary Partridge?
Hi. Um, my name's Hillary Partridge, and this feels like deja vu. I'm currently a teacher at Phoenisha and have had the good fortune to work at all of the elementary schools in the district, including West Hurley. I can attest that mu- that the moving statements that were read to you by my colleagues from Woodstock at the last meeting. Everything that they said so eloquently about the wonders of their school holds true with Phoenisha as well. I have been through district reconfiguration and school closing before, and I know how divisive it can be. It is such an emotional topic that is, that is being done for financial reasons. It is hard to equate children, communities, and experiences with dollar signs. We all understand that there has been declining enrollment for many, many years, and that something must be done. But what? The district spent many thousands of dollars to hire experts, compile data, hold forums, do surveys, and yet the decision is still left to you. Whatever you choose will be criticized by some and applauded by others. I truly hope that in the end, we can all come together as a district and an Antiora community and move forward. I would ask that you consider keeping both Phoenisha and Woodstock open as the anchor schools at either end of the geographically enormous district. Closing just one of the neighborhood's schools would devastate and polarize communities perhaps beyond repair. It makes sense that our youngest students don't need to travel any further than need be, and that they remain in their home schools. Phoenisha Elementary is the backbone of the town. Holiday celebrations, parades in commu- in the community garden, the playground, the polling location that are all vital to this community. The field trips to the bank, the post office, the theater, the library, and the ice cream store are all integral parts of being a Phoenisha student, and the shopkeepers look forward to these annual escapades. This is the true definition of a community school, and it would be tragic for the town and the students to lose these experiences. Before any decision, decision is made, I would also ask that, that you are able to definitively say that all options have been considered before closing a school building or two. Have you considered consolidating resources without having to close up buildings? Have changes been made to administrative level that match the needs of our district as the population has declined? Is the money that will be saved by consolidation far greater than the capital project money um, it will cost to accomplish any of the Bachman scenarios? Are the taxpayers going to support these decisions as what's best for their community? No matter what happens, I hope that the district and the Board of Education is transparent about the decision and will come up with a comprehensive plan to help heal the community or communities that will be so greatly impacted by this decision. I thank you for letting me speak.
Vincent Christofora? I don't see Vincent here. Well, Vince?
Hello. And my name is Vincent Christofora. I'm a student here at Antiora. I'm a sophomore. I would like to start off by thanking the board for allowing me to speak today. I believe that the health teacher is one of the best teachers at Antiora. One of the reasons that I believe this is because she's an engaging teacher who makes learning fun. She teaches in a way that makes the information easy to remember and makes kids excited to learn. She spends a lot of her, a lot of time making appealing slideshow presentations for her classes that are very clearly directed to the topic she is teaching, and someone you could talk to about anything. In the first half of the year, she was my teacher for health. Now in the second half, I have her for study hall, where she does not hesitate to help anyone with work for any of their classes if they need it. Outside of the health, outside of class, the health teacher has also coached four different sports teams. Boys varsity soccer, varsity ski team, as well as boys and girls varsity tennis. She was asked to ke- te- she was asked to coach both the tennis teams and the ski team. So if she had not decided to give her time to coach those teams, odds are those teams would not have hap- had a coach, and therefore they wouldn't have been able to play. As our class advisor, she had helped us, s- she had helped our sophomore class raise over four thousand five hundred dollars this, just this year. Another reason she is such a good teacher is because she always does her best to keep you on the right track in life and prepare you for later down the road. She uses real-life examples in her lessons to show real-world usages of the topics, such as healthy coping mechanisms, interpersonal communication, proper decision-making, money management, healthy nutrition, and other lifestyle skills. Also, as you may or may not know, there is currently a teacher shortage, not only in New York, but e- even in our school. There is an example in the high school math department, where last year, a teacher retired and the position had to be filled. And a neat, a new teacher was not hired. Consequently, a teacher, a teacher who usually teaches a different part of math is teaching something they probably have not done since high school or college. Furthermore, if the health teacher does not get brought back, the school will have an extremely difficult time finding someone not just to fill in the position, but that is as qualified and can live up to the high standard created by her for a replacement. In conclusion, I believe that it would be a very poor decision not to bring back the health teacher because of her enthusiasm to help students, the extra hours she puts in for the kids, and their teaching qualification with real-life experiences to aid in their teaching. Thank you.
Cody Hillard?
Hello. My name is Cody Hillard. First, I'd like to thank you for letting me speak here at this meeting and express my opinion to the board about the decision to removal of the he- to remove the health teacher at Antiora. I understand the schools around the nation are facing a vacancy of teachers, with a whopping average of one vacancy per school. And according to uh, CB, an article by CBS, New York will need more than a hundred and eighty thousand teachers in the next decade. So it's surprising and upsetting to me that this decision is being brought to a vote. There's much more that goes into hiring a new teacher than just interviewing and saying yes or no to a candidate. A hiring committee is nee- hire, hiring committee, hiring committee is needed. Hiring ads to, have to be made and posted. Finding candidates takes time, especially during a teacher shortage. Once a candidate has been found, they must be interviewed, and if they are hired, they will be, they have to be trained and oriented. This whole process takes time from people's busy days and costs more money to train new teachers. Our health teacher is one of the only teachers in the school that seem gen- to genuinely care about the students at, at the school. I've had teachers in the past that have handed out an assignment and just sat at their desk without much engagement. In health, the teacher cre- in health, the teacher gets involved, explains the material in a way that anybody can understand. She creates her own slideshows and assignments, meant to teach us in a way that stays with us without enforcing it down our throats with loads of studying and homework. She uses creative ideas and activities to make classwork fun and effective. When kids come to class, they're excited to learn, even topics students might normally think was boring. The health teacher is very active in the school community. She has organized fundraisers and events. She has been a coach for multiple sports teams over the years, and a unique among our teachers. She cares about each and every student individually, and is a person to talk to if one is going through something. The health teacher is a valued asset in the school community. It would be a mistake to get rid of her. The school's resources would drop significantly if, in her absence, as she organizes many of the fundraisers. Not only does she want the best for the students while in her class, but the best for their futures as well.
Clark Goodrich?
Uh, I'm here to introduce myself. My name is Clark Goodrich. I'm running for the board. I submitted my application uh, today, thank you. Um, my wife Joy and I moved here in nineteen eighty-six. Uh, our three children are already graduated. So I'm kind of uh, impartial to the decision processes coming up. Um, I'm retired from IBM after forty-two years, so I've got a lot of free time on my ti- uh, on my hands. So I can analyze the data and, and look through it, try to help the board make some decisions. So, you know, I've, I've got a lot of experience in a lot of different things. You know, I've got six patents, big deal, you know. I've got a lot of work experience. But more importantly, when I'm running for the Board of Education is, I care about the community. I've always worked with softball, Little League, Boy Scouts. I was captain of the uh, West Hurley Rescue Squad for a while. I still ski patrol at Bel Air. And uh, when I heard the three teachers talk at the board meeting at uh, previously from uh, Woodstock, it became obvious that they had a perfect class size, what I think is a perfect class size, which is around the eighteen-sized classroom. And why would you close that school? It did not make any sense, and that's one of the reasons I'm here. I'm also here because I have a lot of parents that moved into our, our streets around me. And they're, they all have pre-K kids. They don't have time to run for the board. And it's really, they really want that West Hurley school to stay open. So maybe the school district can look at multiple phases of going to a consolidated campus. That may be something that you could look at and hold off on closing West Hurley until it's really needed. I like working in a team environment. If elected, I'll work with the uh, the Board of Ed. I have a lot of respect for the current board. I have no issues with the current board. I believe I can uh, be a team player and assist the team, the board, and uh, most important, I want to help improve the uh, the student learning experience here at Antiora. Thank you very much.
Lindsay?
So I'm uh, totally off-topic here. I'm here to announce, to save the dates. Um, on behalf of the three elementary PTAs, we want to announce that we are jointly sponsoring a meet-the-candidate's event for the five Board of Ed candidates. This event will take place on May eighth from six-thirty to seven-thirty, from, I'm sorry, from six to seven-thirty PM here at the high school auditorium. The Mid-Hudson Region League of Women Voters will be moderating this event. Uh, the audience can submit questions to the moderator the night of, or they can be emailed to me at antiora.pip, that's P-I-P, at gmail dot com. All questions will be submitted to her um, before the event. This is a great event and a great way for the voters of this community to get to know um, the candidates and where they stand on all kinds of issues. Voting takes place on May sixteenth between two and nine PM at Phoenisha Woodstock or Bennett Elementary, and we hope everyone comes out to vote. And I also want to let you know that the Woodstock PTA is hosting a plant and yard sale on Saturday, May sixth, from nine to three, and we welcome all community members. We'll have a food truck, ice cream from Nancy's, uh, which is a local business in Woodstock. Thanks.
Coco Asada?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Coco Asada, and I am a sophomore here at Antiora. Um, today I will be speaking on behalf of the future of a very special health teacher's career at this school. I have been privileged enough to have this person as a teacher, a coach, a class advisor, and a mentor. And in every role, she has gone above and beyond for her students. In athletics, she has stepped up to coach two sports that were completely unfamiliar um, for the benefit of her students. I was on varsity ski team this past season, and without her, we would not have had that opportunity. And, oh, I lost my spot, oh. So sorry, um, she has als- you know, I'm gonna freestyle. She has been our um, an amazing class advisor. She has supported us in all of our fundraisers with planning um, to boost morale and um, I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous. Um, she's given so much of her free time um, to do all of this for us. And as a student who does many extracurriculars, having a teacher who's motivated to accomplish things makes me work harder at all the things I want to achieve during my time here. We have grown very close, baking cupcakes and pizzas for fundraisers until ten o'clock at night, and watching her attempt to ski for the first time in her life. Um, this health teacher has given so much to her students, and as one who's very grateful for all that she has done, I believe that it's only right for us to do the same for her. Not having this teacher for the remain- for the remainder of my time at Antiora would be devastating. Future students of this school deserve to have the heart and the energy that she brings to the school, because it is something that can't be found anywhere else. Um, and then, I still have a few minutes left. But I'm speaking on behalf of Nadu Louis. So this is in her perspective. But I am a junior here at Antiora, and I wish that I could have been here in person. While I have never had Ms. Sheera, oh, shoot. I've never had this teacher as, this person as a teacher, um, but I did have her as my coach. I transferred to Antiora at the beginning of my sophomore year and found the transition difficult. Something that I looked forward to as I adjusted was the opportunity to be a member of the ski team. However, soon after signing up, I was told that they had no coach for the team and that they were unsure if there would be a season. This teacher volunteered her time to step up and be our coach when no one else did. Not only was she our coach last year, but this year as well. This gave us the opportunity to have a race season and we, when we otherwise wouldn't have. Her understanding of what the ski team meant to us was clear as she learned how to be a gate judge, bought proper gear, and even more, she pushed herself to learn to ski so that she could be the best coach possible. Her dedication to us as a team is something that I appreciate immensely. What I learned from having Ms. Sheer as a coach is her dedication and care for the team and each member. Thank you.
Olivia McHugh? Olivia, I would ask you not to use any names while you're speaking, thank you.
Um, good evening. I'm speaking on behalf of Mercedes Story. This is a letter from a parent. It is to my understanding that the board is going to deny, deny the health teacher's tenure for reasons unknown to me. I had the pleasure to spend the better part of almost four days at the state skiing championships. What, what I witnessed was a devoted and dedicated teacher that wanted the best for the girls skiing. She was organized, supportive, and caring. Girls had three meals a day, were well-supervised, and most important, had a great time. The health teacher was attentive from beginning to end, and I would trust her unconditionally if I was not able to make another overnight trip. In addition, all three of my children had the teacher and enjoyed her classes. They have also enjoyed the wizard, wizard's game that she had orchestrated, painting their parking spots to raise money. I get a smile every time I pull into the parking lot, driving through, and seeing every, everyone having a good time, that weekend was great. These are the things that they will remember forever, and it is important. I'm grateful for this. Um, I would also like to add, on behalf of myself, this teacher, um, I've stayed after numerous times, as again, um, been here till ten o'clock, making cupcakes, pizzas for so many fundraisers. I have to say, in my Antiora, um, as a student, I have not seen such fundraiser, so many fundraiser happen at this school for a very long time, and I feel like it's amazing that it's been brought back to here. Um, I would thank you for giving me the opportunity to voice my thoughts.
Ari Boyd?
Hi, um, I'm Ari Boyd. I'm a junior. Um, what is sad without the health teacher? Exactly, nothing. Through the last few years, she has been holding the student organization together practically on her own. She is one of the most active and supportive people in this entire school. She encourages us to make better decisions and to use our brains more. In all years, she has been using her role in various ways to help numerous student groups and coach many teams when nobody else would step up. She has enjoyable and innovative lessons that make us actually want to show up to school and learn. She has taken so much time in helping and raising thousands of dollars for the students, which I don't see many doing. In fact, I have never seen a class host so many fundraisers. She has basically, and single-handedly, organized the biggest event that Antiora has seen, honestly, in the last few years. Um, which was the highlight of the year and the past few years, especially for myself. Um, being that life has been very dull and detestable, especially here lately, I think we should be focusing on more fun things. But I truly believe that this is quite unfair and such an injustice and a true loss for this district. In closing, I just want to ask this question, and hopefully this will stay with everybody. But doesn't anybody actually care but, about what we think? And it just seems to me that nobody actually listens or cares enough. But thank you so much for giving me the time to speak.
Val?
Hello. I am a freshman taking this teacher's CPR slash first aid class since January.
I am a freshman taking this teacher's CPR slash first aid class since January of this year. This class teaches crucial elements of health and safety that everyone around them should know for themselves and also for their surrounding people. These skills learned by former, current, and future students could save the lives of someone you know and/or love. And I want every one of you to look me in the eyes and acknowledge that if you cancel this class, someone could be unjustly hurt. This teacher is extremely compassionate while making sure you are confident in your skills that you're learning, whether it be in the house class or the CPR class, or even in sports. She's one of the few teachers that gives us knowledge in any scenario, any situation, and in daily life in general. All of what we learn is going to be applied at some point in life and can mean the difference between life or death in some cases for some people. She is someone you feel you can go to when you need advice, medical or not, and is trusted by most people who have had her as teachers, if not all of them. Firing her would be unjust and would actively prohibit, and would actively prohibit students from learning these skills that could save their peers' lives or even theirselves. And this is one of the few classes that we actually have to take, or take in general, that can help us, like when we leave school.
Josh Brown.
Hi there. My name is Josh Brown. I am not a student at Antioa. I am a parent, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the coach. So I know nothing about the health teacher. I myself have been a coach, both a soccer coach and a ski coach. I also run, I'm the general manager of operations of a local business that employs 150-plus people. And so, in terms of coaching, I feel like anybody that will give their free time, even if they're paid a small stipend for it, to spend more time with our kids and enable them to do things that will better their lives, they should be praised and not punished. It's a pretty thankless job I've done, and as I said, I've done it very much myself. In terms of, I guess I'd ask the board, you know, as someone who is an executive manager, when I have, when there's fault below me, when there's people that are struggling below me, it starts with me. So I think you have to look up and not down in this case if there's fault at coach level. You have to look up and really start with yourselves and decide why that person is struggling with what they're doing. But I do feel like this coach obviously has wonderful support from students. My sons, who both took part on the soccer team and the ski team, were very grateful for her coaching and her support, and I'd like to thank her as well. Thank you.
Is there anyone who did not sign up who'd like to speak tonight? Okay. Can you state your name when you get to the microphone, please? Can you hold the microphone in your hand, please?
Hello. I'm a bit nervous. My name is Stevie Ursig. I am a member of the graduating class of 2020. I'm here to speak on behalf of the health teacher. I don't have anything written, and I feel like I was a bit ill-prepared for this, so I'm definitely just going to wing it. And I think some of these guys spoke like the facts to you guys about, you know, monetary stuff and things of that nature, but I just really want to talk about the emotional impact and lasting experience this person has had on me going forward into college and my adult life in general. Antioa was definitely a hard experience, to say the least. I made it out, but kicking and screaming. And I think that this teacher broke barriers in the first year of knowing her that other teachers struggled to break with me for years. And I really felt comforted by her, and she gave me a wing to, you know, rest myself under and feel reprieve from the massive, like, wave of being a teenager and the midlife crisis of trying to get through here, you know? And I honestly think that it would be extremely detrimental to the community here to lose her. And I think that the decision is one that should be definitely rethought and hopefully even revised because I think that this community definitely needs her and her energy and her space. Here is one that she's created that hasn't been here before. It's new, it's fresh, it's exciting. I mean, no offense to any of the other amazing teachers I've had over the years, but I mean, I think what a lot of the students here are out crying for is somebody they can relate to, somebody that they can feel like really understands them and really sees them. And this teacher has gone above and beyond to connect with every single one of her students that she's ever come across. And I think that that's really, really powerful and something that this community could maybe hold on to. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maddie Homel. I am a 12th grade student, and I am here to speak on behalf of the superintendent's decision about the health teacher. For starters, she has always been there for me whenever I have needed her. She's always been a shoulder to lean on, and she has given me so much advice and so much comfort. She has always kept her content relevant to her students, and it's always information that has been so helpful to me even outside of school. She is also the realest teacher I know. She never sugarcoats anything or, like, about the outside world or about what life will be like, and that has also helped me in so many ways. Overall, I have learned more from her than I have with any other teacher. She has always helped out with her volleyball, with my volleyball games, with keeping score, which is her outside time. And she has always given me tips on how to become a better player, which has impacted me a lot. She has always believed in me and always made me feel like, just feel like a good person, and I think that's very important. I believe that this decision is very upsetting, not only because she is the best teacher that I have ever had, but because she deserves to be here. For the amount that she has done for the school and for me, she deserves so much better. I hope the board sees the impact that she has made and makes the right decision. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Go ahead.
Good evening, all. My name is Naveen Kleek. I'm an alumni of Antioa. Today, I would like to speak on behalf of the Antioa high school teacher. I want to start by talking about her as a teacher. She is a very understanding teacher. She makes sure that the students that she is teaching are ready for the future things to come in high school or out in the real world when they graduate. She always works with the children with missing work if it is within reason. She is always willing to help her students one-on-one if they struggle with a lesson or even fall behind. She is always open to listen to what others have to say, even if you're not her student. She is willing to help you with work or just listen to you. She is just a caring person. She has such a big heart, she always puts everyone before herself. She is not a selfish person at all. My brother had her as a substitute teacher and loved her. My family speaks so highly of her, she is a good role model to the younger children and to society. She always leaves her personal problems outside before walking in the door to work. She always has a positive attitude. I have built such a good bond with her. She never has bad intentions. She does so much for people, whether it's in school or outside of school. I have gotten so much advice from her on what to do when it comes to schoolwork or just to get advice on life. An example of how wonderful this health teacher goes above and beyond is when I contacted her about a college assignment that required me to observe a teacher. After our conversation, she knew that she was unable to help me directly, but pointed me in the right direction. She took the time to contact other school employees to ensure that I was able to succeed in my assignment. This action demonstrates that she cares about the future of her students. This is something that she could have completely ignored or said no to. Instead, she took the time out of her day to make sure I was successful with the assignment. Isn't that the type of teachers that you want in this district? Those that value their students both inside and outside of the classroom, I am standing here today to ask you to reconsider the recommendation that the superintendent is giving you and allow the teacher to be here for years to come. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Rebecca Shear, obviously the person of interest. I want to thank you again for taking this long time to listen to everybody's comments and concerns. Today's board meeting is a very pivotal moment in my life. I've worked here for four years, and if you know me, I've been involved in more ways than I can count, such as coaching sports, raising $11,000 for students, and spending countless hours outside the school day doing various other things. Today, I was given a choice, a choice that I don't agree with in any capacity, but it is affecting my future in some way, shape, or form. The decision was either to accept the termination and have my employment future rest on that solely, or to put in a resignation. Again, neither decision is something I wanted to do. I was forced to make this decision based on the circumstances, and I'm really hoping that today's everyone's comments and concerns, you can absolutely make whatever decision you want. As you've seen here and heard and have even emailed about this very decision, that obviously this decision is impacting more than just myself, but it's impacting the entire community. So this is what I have to say. To the community, all of you, thank you for embracing me and thank you for helping support these students in various ways. To the parents, you are the real MVPs, most valuable parents, because without you, we wouldn't have students to teach today. And to my students, you are the future. I am beyond thankful for all of those who have stood up here today or emailed to speak on my behalf or simply just showed up to show your support. The kind words that you've shared have resonated with me and have deeply impacted me. And I hope the board takes this, all of the comments into consideration. But let me leave you with this, students. You are smarter than you think, stronger than you believe, and more beautiful than you have ever seen. I will always be here for you regardless of the decision that is made here today. So please, if you are looking for a helping hand, I am here to support you. Thank you again.
Anyone else? Thank you in particular to the young people who spoke tonight. I know that it's really hard to get up in front of a room full of adults and express yourself, and you all did a fantastic job. So thank you for coming. Item 11.01, discussion, possible action, approve the board of registration for 2023 budget vote and election. The Board of Education hereby approves the board registration for the 2023 budget vote and election. May I have a first, please? Trustee Story, second. Trustee Wallace, questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, it's unanimous, thank you. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approval of the following proposition. Proposition number one, 2023-2024 budget, be it resolved that the Antioa Central School District Board of Education be and is hereby authorized to expend the sum set forth under the various headings which are voted upon in gross and not in detail in the total amount of $61,322,550, which includes $20,000 to support public library for the year commencing July 1st, 2023, and ending June 30th, 2024. And the board is authorized to levy and collect the necessary tax thereof on the taxable property of the district. May I have a first, please? Trustee Bishop, second. Trustee Taylor, questions or comments? All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. The Antioa Central School District Board of Education hereby approves the 2023-2024 Ulster County Board of Cooperative Educational Services Administrative Budget in the amount of $6,718,295. May I have a first, please? Trustee Armando, second. Trustee Bishop, questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. The Antioa Board of Education hereby casts their ballot for the five following candidates running unopposed for the Ulster County Board of Cooperative Services. Seat number one, Marla Kaplan. Seat number two, Krista Behringer. Seat number three, no nomination. Seat number four, Christopher Farrell. Seat number five, Donald Green. May I have a first, please? Trustee Bishop, second. Trustee Story, questions or comments? All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. The board hereby approves item numbers 12.02 to 12.06. May I have a first, please? Trustee Story, second. Trustee Bishop, questions or comments? Trustee Story.
I've rescheduled. I have reviewed Schedule U, and it's all in order.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor? Okay, that is unanimous, thank you. Item 13.01, approve all contracts and independent contract retainers. The board hereby approves item numbers 13.02 to 13.05. May I have a first? Trustee Wallace, second. Trustee Story, questions or comments? All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Do we have any committee reports? Any old business? New business? I have new business. Trustee Lynch, do you have?
Trustee Sherry, I know that Mr. Edelman talked about a list of things that we were hoping to get an update on in May, but I just wanted to make sure that we all had the same list. I know one of them was a safety report and the vaping situation. Another was, of course, the research, I think, on the, an update on the research for the region's decision. Wasn't that part of it? He was going to give us a timeline, I believe. And then I know we were also going to get, I think, a full report from the administration about mental health. That's you. Okay, thank you. And those are the three things I'd been tracking in terms of old business, but I just wanted to make sure that that was reasonable. I didn't, I don't know if that's reasonable.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable, and we'll also be hearing from Mr. Harkin on the program that he's been working on as well, which was one of our requests from Mr. Edelman.
Media literacy, is that right? Yeah, something like that, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yes, Trustee Bishop.
Trustee Lynch, I'm wondering if I'm recalling it correctly, I think that Mr. Edelman said that he was going to work with his team over the summer and provide us with a report, or was it prior to that?
We're going to get a timeline from Mr. Edelman at the next meeting and then the report over the summer. So he had agreed that he could provide a timeline for when he would be prepared to make a recommendation to the board, and that should happen over the summer.
That was supposed to happen earlier than the summer because of his timeline, but we were supposed to vote on this during the summer because the teachers needed to have time to make arrangements if we don't have them do the regions. Because our students need to know what they're getting graded on when they come into the class for the first day.
Yeah, so I think that that is exactly what Mr. Edelman is going to do, is give us a timeline, which will tell us his expectations of when he will be prepared to do that, and then we can decide if that is comfortable for all of us. But that will happen at the next meeting, and then we'll know what his thoughts are and his team's thoughts so that we can move forward with that. Anybody else with new business other than me? I want to talk about dress code, and I want to talk about temperature and air quality policies. I think that, excuse me, I think that the, there's been a lot of conversation around dress code lately, and there seems to be a lot of discussion, particularly around, amongst the students, as to how the dress code is being implemented and the ways in which it's being enforced. We do have a dress code policy. I'd like to ask the policy committee to pull it out, take a look at it, look at it in relationship to the article that I sent to everyone. This is not just an Antioa conversation. This is becoming a national and hyper-local conversation. is becoming a national and hyper-local conversation regarding the way that what students are wearing is being policed in the school district. And I think it's also starting to potentially impact things like health and safety, because we do have students going out on 90-degree days wearing hoodies, because they've got tank tops underneath and they can't remove their hoodies. So I think it's just important that we take a look at it, make sure that it's in line with the national conversation, make sure it's in line with what the teachers think is appropriate, and that they have the opportunity to weigh in on this a little bit as well, because they're the ones who have to enforce it. So I think it's just time to pull it out, take a look at it, and I'd ask the policy committee to do that. And at the same time, we have been having a discussion a little bit about air quality and temperature. This is not something that, there is a policy for it, Antioa, but there does seem to be some confusion around it. So I'd like you guys to just start the conversation amongst the policy committee and see if you have some recommendations. Trustee Story?
No, I was waiting for, are you done? Okay, questions. What is this in reference to? Is this, what, is this after-school sports? What are you for air quality and all this stuff? It's, you're very general, so I'm not exactly sure what you're trying to...
It's a very general, currently, it's just a general question. There was some confusion at the high school and Bennett level last week as to whether or not children should be outside, and I think that that is causing confusion for our kids as well. Val, don't... What? Do you have a question? No? Okay. So my, the only thing I'm asking is that we take a look at what other districts are doing, if anything. We take a look around the country and see what's happening there, and that Antioa is able to have this discussion, including all of the faculty and anyone else, the shared decision-making committee. I'm interested in bringing as many people as possible in on the discussion, but do we need a policy or is this something that can be handled at the district level?
I know you asked Amanda to reach out to NISBA. Does NISBA have any sample policies for this stuff?
They did have a, not specifically for temperature and air quality, but they did have a sample policy, and they are getting back to Amanda as they do a further search to see how it's being handled in other areas. Anybody else?
Just so you know, policy committee will meet on Friday, so we'll address it then.
Thanks. Yeah, and honestly, guys, I'm just looking to start a conversation, because there was a lot of confusion on Friday that the kids felt pretty strongly about. And I think there was confusion among the staff as well, but at least that was what was shared with me. So if we can at least start the conversation, and for sure, the conversation around dress code. Okay? All right, thank you. Any RFIs for the superintendent?
I was wondering, I'm sorry if this blurs old business and an RFI. Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent Allison gave us a good overview of, or an explanation that you prompted Trustee Sherry about the cost of tuition, if we were to look at that policy again, about having students come in. And the question I think that you had asked was about, you know, how do, would we handle the rising costs of a child who had special needs? I was wondering if we could get the policy from Reinbeck and compare it, because I know that they allow students to pay to go there. And I was also wondering if we could better understand the cost for, the potential cost for, that would be incurred by taxpayers, because as I understand it, we wouldn't be able to service a child who required, as we were talking about, a $300,000 level of care, right? We don't have the services here from a special needs perspective. They wouldn't be, here at Antioa, we would provide, we would, we would make sure they had the services they needed at a different institution. So I'm trying to figure out what would the highest cost be potentially that we would be able to service here at Antioa for that student, and what the gap would be to make a better decision about the potential incurement of cost for a taxpayer. Is that clear, or no?
No, no. If you could clarify a little bit, because no matter, if we accept a student, our taxpayers bear the cost of that student regardless of what program they are enrolled in. So if we have to send them to a residential program and it costs several hundred thousand dollars, our taxpayers pay that cost.
Not the, the, the district that was sending that child? I thought it was for the costs incurred in this district?
No. If we accept them and they are enrolled in our district through tuition, then we pay whatever costs are associated with educating that child regardless of where their program is located.
I guess I'm, I'm just struggling why we would accept them if we weren't going to be servicing them. We would be sending them to another...
Because if you, if you have, if you have a non-resident tuition policy, whoever comes to the district, you have to accept. You can't choose not to accept some based on their disabilities.
But we, correct me, if, I'm sorry, but we would only be able to charge around $26,000, is that correct?
Correct.
So we would have a potential, you know, in this case scenario that Trustee Lynch has brought up, that the taxpayers would have something like a $275,000 bill for that one student who came from, is that correct?
Correct. And I mean, that is a, that is a complete anomaly, very extreme, like I would not want to...
I'm just trying to figure out, because I mean, it would potentially, you know, could potentially add a few, some, some students, but the risks seem to outweigh the costs.
If, yes, if we have a non-resident tuition policy, whoever chooses to enroll pays the tuition that we are allowed to charge, and we have to provide the appropriate services for that child. And clearly, that example is very extreme.
The average student, correct me if I'm wrong, who gets services or has an IEP, let's say that, was a more common scenario, is in the $80,000 range. Is that correct?
That's the tuition rate that the state has calculated for our special education population. Do you want to...
Yeah, I think it would also depend on the services that we were recommending. For instance, if you have a student that requires a paraprofessional support, that's, that's a significant cost, or teacher of the visually impaired or teacher of the deaf, that's a cost that we would look at both these, and then looking at our related service. So although it may be a flat rate in terms of tuition costs, ultimately, when you break down all of those numbers, it could certainly be much higher than that in terms of what we're actually paying.
Superintendent McLaren, even a mainstream child, our cost per pupil is way above $26,000, correct? Wait, when we broke it down?
It depends on how you calculate it.
Right.
That, that's the tuition rate that we, it wasn't 26.
It was in the 30s, wasn't it?
It was in the, I have to look at the document. I don't want to, I don't want to quote the wrong number, but...
So I can't see us justifying charging our taxpayers extra for any extra student coming in if they would have to pay for a non-resident student for any need?
I mean, the way that Assistant Superintendent McLaren, when I asked her to break down our cost per pupil, the way that she said it was, was like, just take our budget and divide it by the number of students. I know that there are other ways to calculate that cost, but either way, you're still looking at over $50,000 per student. With, according to some of the numbers that Dr. Bill was sharing, is expected to go up. The cost per pupil in New York State is expected to rise dramatically over the next couple of years. So we'd be looking at a gap of almost $25,000 per student in order to do that, with the potential of, you know, yeah, exponential growth in that cost. If we took on a student, let's say, God forbid, had an accident while they were with us, they may not have come in as a special needs student and could have a TBI and then require an out-of-district placement. You know, so there's just no way to, to kind of assume what those students are going to need. But if we're capped at even $23,000 and our cost per student is over $50,000, then obviously that's a, a cost to our taxpayers that the potential enrollment does not justify.
Thanks for the clarification. It's helpful.
And I, I'm sorry, I just want to interject. I will provide you with the Reinbeck policy because I pulled it, I pulled it up last week. They also allow their employees who are not district residents to bring their children to the district without charging any tuition. So that is fully bearred by the cost, the taxpayers.
I'm just interested in that policy, just for one second, thinking about why they might do that. Do you, do the, do, as far as we know, do they have easier time with retention and recruitment because of that policy? I mean, is there a way to...
I don't, I don't know.
Figure that out. It might be worth at least having a conversation. I mean, that's something that if it, we have a shortage of teachers, it may be a way to go to attract some new, new, new people.
Let's go back to, I want to make a comment about the special ed student. What some of our trustees may not know, that if we have a residential special ed student, say, that is been placed out in California, the school district is required to pay for the parents to go and visit that. So that's another added cost that the district would have to, or the taxpayers would have to pay. I also know of another school district that also allows staff to use their, bring their students in, and to my knowledge, only, that only, the superintendent was the only staff member that brought their, their student, had their child come to the district at the time. They didn't have any other staff members bring their children that lived outside of district into that building, to that school district.
But is that an option to, to limit it to staff? Their children of staff who are out of, I mean...
That's a benefit that was negotiated into bargaining agreements.
So what I hear David asking, and I just want to be clear on your answer, is, is that something that could be offered to staff but not offered in the community? And it can be an RFI if...
I would ask the attorney. I'm not, I'm not going to answer that.
Thank you. All right. So David, do you want to do that as an RFI?
Sure, I'd love to do that as an RFI, just solely to know if there's another potential arrow in our arsenal of attraction, so.
Any other RFIs for the superintendent? Trustee Story is the first to adjourn. Who would like to be second? Trustee Hemingway Lynch will be back on May 2nd at the Woodstock School.